A call to order the September 3, 2020 special meeting of the Morris Township Committee. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
Yes, Mr. Arvinides. Ms. Darvinides.
Here.
Mr. Dorothy.
Here.
Mr. Mancuso.
Here.
Mr. Grisell.
Here.
Mayor Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
The legal notice required in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act has been satisfied, and a statement certifying same will be executed. Please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mr. Carlson, the ordinance, please.
I'm sorry, that's not on the agenda, it's not listed on the agenda. Just want to have a copy of the ordinance number.
07-20.
This is a continued here, this is a continued hearing of ordinance 07-20 on redevelopment of the Abbey property.
Thank you. So, welcome everyone. Tonight is the second night of the public hearing on the redevelopment plan for the Abbey. Tonight's setup, we do, at least as of right now, have audio and speakers, or video and speakers in the parking lot. We may end up bringing that in, depending on the weather, it's a little iffy. But we will be allowing people to appear in person. And I'll explain the details of that in a minute. For the record, we have, in the meeting room tonight, we have Committeeman Dorothy, Administrator Quinn, Deputy Mayor Grisell, myself, Kathy Wilson, our engineer Jim Slate, and our attorney Scott Carlson. We also have with us via Zoom our planner, Mr. Phillips, and Committeemen Mancuso and Committeemen Arvinides. And we have a couple of presenters from RH who will be sharing their presentation with us later. We also have our clerk Kathleen Emilio with us via Zoom. As of right now, according to my records, we have about 50 people on as attendees. And for anyone who joined us last week, a good, last week, Wednesday, the 26th, we had our first public hearing on the Abbey. A good portion of the meeting was testimony from individuals. We heard from our planner, Mr. Phillips, who explained the redevelopment plan. We heard from Mr. Steck, who explained some objections to the plan. We heard from people from our Historic Preservation Commission and the Morris County Historical Society, who shared their views. And then we just began public comments, and that is where we left off last week, and that is where we're going to pick up tonight. For anyone who's interested in looking at video of last week's meeting or this week's meeting, so you know, we post videos from the township on our YouTube channel, which you can access by Googling Morris Township Videos YouTube channel. A few words by way of introduction. Obviously, we're in the midst of making a very important decision for our community. We clearly have a range of views among our residents, from those who strongly object to those who enthusiastically support. Our major goal, for those of us who sit on the Township Committee, is to make a decision that serves the best interest of our community. And to do that, we need to hear everyone's questions and concerns, which is a major focus of our meeting tonight. Some of tonight's goals include, we hope, to clarify everyone's understanding of what the redevelopment plan says, how the decision-making process will work going forward. We want everyone to have a chance to ask questions and express concerns. If there are concerns, we want the opportunity to identify options for addressing those concerns. To me, that's an important part of the meeting tonight. And we also will be, will have the opportunity tonight to identify and discuss possible changes to the plan that is before us. The notion that this plan is take it or leave it is inaccurate. We can make changes, and to me, that's a major discussion as part of our meeting tonight. Here's how tonight's meeting will work. We are going to start with the public hearing. It will be a five-minute time limit per person. Once everyone has, who wishes to, has spoken for the first time, then we'll go into a second round of questions and comments, again, a five-minute time limit, and if needed, a third round. At that time, we will then conclude the public commentary. And anyone who is in the parking lot with us tonight, who wishes to speak in person, should let the ambassadors who are there know, and they will escort you into the building. Tonight, we're going to be alternating speakers, one in person, one by Zoom. Following the public comment, we'll hear from Mr. David Stanczek from RH. He's on our panelist list with us this evening. And he has an associate with him whose name I can't read.
Elise.
But we will introduce, Elise, okay? Sorry, I can't see your last name, Elise, but we will introduce you when it gets to your presentation. After your presentation, there'll be questions by the Township Committee. Following that, Mr. Phillips will be answering the questions that have been shared as part of tonight's meeting. We, the Township Committee members, will answer any questions that have been asked of us, and then we'll wrap up with some final thoughts by the Township Committee members. We will not be voting tonight. We will be voting at a subsequent meeting at a date to be determined, and we will decide that before we leave tonight. So with that, I'd like to get started. And I guess we're going to alternate in person and Zoom, so I don't see anyone in person here with us, sorry.
We'll start with Zoom.
We'll start with Zoom. And do we have?
So what I see, the first person having their hand raised is Liam Gallagher. And I currently show you as being muted, Liam, if you want to unmute and give us your name and address, please.
Liam, can you hear us?
I can, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, my full name is Liam Gallagher, and I live on 22 Beechwood Drive.
Go ahead, five minutes. Oh, by the way, I didn't say we are showing a one-minute sign when you have one minute left and 30 seconds when you have 30 seconds left. As a reminder to, we're going to try to keep everybody on the five-minute time schedule. So go ahead, Liam.
Sure, thank you. I just wanted to call in and thank the committee for facilitating this meeting via Zoom and in person, for those that couldn't make it there in person. But on behalf of my wife and myself, I'd like to support our, our voice, our support for the redevelopment plans of the Abbey, as we believe it will set a positive precedent and establish itself as a high-end anchor tenant that Madison Avenue Corridor desperately needs. We believe this is an opportunity to be strategic, be thoughtful, and position Morris Township as an even more attractive destination to live, work, and visit. This is a creative use of a historic space, and it will allow Morris Township to sell, set itself apart from our neighboring towns and build upon our identity. The history of Morris Township is undeniable, and this plan allows her to be preserved and reimagined for the next generation. In its past life, this house was used to gather guests and host musicals. Now there's an opportunity for us all to gather and appreciate the space once more. We live in close proximity to the Abbey and certainly understand the concerns of increased traffic and congestion within the corridor, but firmly believe that the benefits of this redevelopment vastly outweigh those concerns, especially when alternatives of demolition or apartments are potential options. We hope this is the beginning of a new vision for the Madison Avenue Corridor, and that this focus, and that this is focused on inclusive community space for us all to enjoy. Thank you.
Thank you, Liam. Okay, next, we have in-person.
Sir.
Is that Mr. Dingler?
No, no, we're, we're here, Mayor.
I think that's Mr. Dingler, isn't it?
Yes, yes, with the mask on.
I'm getting better at recognizing people through the mask.
Is it all right for me to take my mask off after I'm here?
Yes, while you're speaking, yeah.
Thanks very much.
And if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Jim Dingler. I live at 47 Crescent Drive, and I've lived there for 25 years. So, am I on the clock?
That's where you are.
Okay. Restart the clock, please. So thanks very much, Mayor, and council members. Thanks for the opportunity to come in tonight and be able to state our case and have our comments. So I'm just going to wade right into it here, since there's time constraints. But, you know, being a neighboring, a neighboring, bordering the Abbey, I certainly have some concerns about the redevelopment plan, so my, my comments are going to be along those lines. And from the beginning, our primary concerns have been, for the boarding neighbors, have been the density, the setbacks, the parking, and the access points. And it's my understanding these issues will not be addressed or changed following the plan adoption. By far, the key driver for these issues and concerns are the project density. It gives rise to setback issues, parking concerns, problematic traffic patterns on and off the property. The Abbey development is inevitable. I don't think there's anybody here that doesn't believe that. There is going to be a development on the Abbey, and we're not looking to prevent any and all development on the Abbey. So if there's any confusion about that, I just want to state that right now. But we do want to have an input, we do want to have influence, and we do think that this particular plan is overdone for this small-sized lot. And I'm going to get into some of the specifics here. But remember, this is going to be a very different mixed-use development for this, for this lot, with expanded evening and weekend hours, with peak times on the weekend, and it has a lot of repercussions for the neighbors. So the key drivers for neighbor concerns and overdevelopment are the development plan intensity. It manifests itself in several different ways. The 65% coverage of the buildings and asphalt to the total lot size, the tiny inadequate setbacks from neighboring properties of 10 to 15 feet, the massive parking requirements, and the disruptive traffic flows. There's some conversation about buffers, but I want to make sure during this conversation and the ones that follow, that we make sure that we make a distinction between buffers and setbacks. I'm here talking about setbacks. Buffers, we see as more cosmetic in nature and really try to address issues, but they don't relate to the root causes of what's going on here. The Crescent Drive property concerns for the Abbey parking are very large and prominent for us. 60 cars parked in the area, beginning 15 feet away from our boundary line. You know, think of it from a rational standpoint. If you saw a development coming towards you, and you knew there was going to be, that trees were going to be wiped down, there was going to be a huge asphalt parking lot with 60 cars in constant motion within 15 feet of your property. I think that would get your attention, and I think you would be pushing back. So that's one of the reasons I'm here tonight. I think it's pretty obvious. That also means 30 sets of headlights coming across over into our property. We're very concerned about the security, the noise, the lighting, and our privacy. Also, by the way, there's going to be a lot of 100-year-old oaks and evergreens that are going to be taken down for this beautiful parking lot. And we think that's sad. We think that those, those trees and that setting are part of the package, part of the historic nature of the Abbey. And I think it would be sad to see all that, all that long-growth trees taken down. Options are needed here. So what we would ask the Township to consider is relocating this parking lot to the front side of the property, where there are 40-foot setbacks that have been designated. This solution addresses several different problems. There is room, that needs to be considered. That would, that would solve a lot of problems on the planning side for RH, I think, you know, given, given the pushback that we're giving them on the parking lot, and would certainly solve a lot of problems on, on the neighboring side.
Thank you, Mr. Dingler. Can I ask you to come back at the, at the next round? We are trying to be fair to everyone. I know you have excellent points, but I'd like to give everyone five minutes, the first round, and if you can just pick up right where you left off on the second round.
Is that what, is that was actually five minutes? It's actually five minutes and 22 seconds.
I'd be willing to cede my five minutes to him.
Thank you. It's okay with me.
Don't do that.
No? Okay, Mr. Dingler, we're going to, we're going to ask you to come back at the second round, okay? I hate to do it, I'm sorry.
I just have to say this is really totally inadequate, and it's, it's part of, part of the superficial structure and the abstract nature of these restrictions, but I don't think it's in any way adequate.
I hear you. Okay, we're going to move on to the next person from Zoom.
So Heidi Ross.
Okay, Heidi, please say your name and address for the record, if you would.
Okay, test one-two, test.
Pardon?
Test one-two, test.
Yeah, we hear you. Go ahead.
I have two very short questions, and I would ask that they be, that I be allowed to pose them outside.
Your address, please.
My name and address, Heidi Ross, 6 Deegan Lane.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So to make myself clear, I have two brief questions I'd like to pose outside of my five minutes. May I do that?
No, Heidi, you have five minutes, like everyone else. We're going to be strict about it. I hate to do it, but I'm doing it. So you have your five minutes. Please ask your questions within your five minutes.
Somebody has yielded to me in writing, and I have a document I'd like to share with you to do so. Will that be honored either?
Heidi, please ask your questions.
That's the question.
The question is what?
Will my five minutes that I obtained in writing be added to my five minutes tonight?
No. Come on, Heidi, please get going with your questions.
Well, I actually don't have any questions. I have, I have a statement.
Go ahead.
Just yesterday, threads of the fabric of life became particularly clear to me and seemed relative to the topic of the evening and to this quasi-conversation. We have all struggled under the cover of COVID, which Mr. Mancuso, I think, referred to in one Township Committee meeting as feeling like he was in the dark. I've struggled in preparing myself and what I might say to you all in a way that you would be able to find it meaningful and understandable. The five of you, the Township Committee, have all struggled as well in varied ways, in individual ways, as I have. So who's in the room, and what are we doing here? It's just you and me. You, the Township Committee, and me, a member of the public. And what do we stand for? Our answers, I'm sure, could be entirely different from each other. And to these points, I suggest this. Are we math students? Or are we political science students? Or are we English students? And for the purpose of tonight, I'll suggest that we be English students, and so as a means to an end, I invite you into a creative process with me. I stand before you hopeful and respect, and hopeful that you respect my suggestions and engage, taking notice that all the others that are interested and are vested remain outside the room. I ask you to put down your pens and close your eyes for as long as you can stand, as I am doing now. And when you open them, pick up your pen and jot down the time, as noted, on a clock nearby. I engage in a conversation with you in this room. So my story begins. I engage in a conversation, I engaged in a conversation yesterday with someone I don't know very well, outside the Walgreens near the Kings, where the S and H green stamps used to be and it's next to a small Sears Roebuck store along South Street. When I was a girl growing up in the, in Morristown in the 60s and 70s, the conversation turned to family history and the importance of history in general. As I turned to walk into the store, a young man stood, holding something in his hand, looking forlorn. I went into the store. The particulars of the conversation are not really relevant here and now, but they did inspire me, and so I have a story of my own to share, one that I believe is in fact relevant to the topic of tonight's hearing.
Okay, Heidi, hold that thought. We're going to ask you to come back and continue at the next round. You'll have your second round of five minutes.
I thank you for, I thank you, Township Committee, for joining me in the room and listening carefully.
We are listening carefully. We're going to move on. Thank you, Heidi.
Thank you.
Next, we have someone here in person who I don't know, and if you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Anne Costiak, 6 Crescent Drive.
Anne Costiak, nice to meet you.
Nice to see everybody. Thanks very much for the opportunity to speak tonight. I actually have two comments to piggyback on Jim Dingler. Kathy, you had made a comment that there can be modifications and things made to it. Can the setback is one of the modifications to go from 10 or 15 feet to 30 feet setback? That can be done.
I'm not answering that particular question right at this moment.
Because that, that is the, that is the prop, that is our beef. You know, everyone has made, it kind of got twisted around, and we're the bad guys, we're the objectors. We are only objecting in the fact that, of the setbacks. I think what restoration hardware has planned, or what anyone has planned to preserve the Abbey, whether it be used for a town hall or an event space, whatever, is perfect. We don't want to see it torn down. There aren't a lot. I mean, we have Canfield right around Crescent Drive, and there's beautiful big homes. Another home that was put on, Glen Allen, that was put on Mansion de May years before. So we don't want to see it torn down. You know, whatever, you know, Nick Camiati says, or Bill Ryan says, or anyone outside the neighborhood, that's not true. However, our beef, as Jim said, is the 30-foot, it should be 30 feet. If this was coming in your backyard, I think all of you would agree. You know, Mark, you mentioned that you went through something similar in your neighborhood. But, you know, you as a child might get a little different. You were not the homeowner, your parents were. I think, and Madison Avenue is going to change, we know that. But that's our question. You're saying modifications. That modification, you said you're not going to answer that tonight, that and it's.
No, no, I did not say tonight. I said right at this moment.
Okay, okay, so.
It will be answered tonight.
Okay.
Our processes were taking comments and questions, and then Mr. Phillips is going to answer them all at the same time. He is taking copious notes, I'm assured, and that will be, I'm sure, at the top of his list of questions to answer.
So then after he speaks, will we have another chance to speak? Ask more questions?
He, our processes were having public questions and comments, and then after that, we're going to hear from the RH people, and after that, we'll hear from Mr. Phillips. And then you'll hear from us.
Okay, and one last item. The pilot, payment in lieu of taxes, is the financial basis for this redevelopment plan.
No, no, I want to say the pilot is not part of our conversation tonight, okay? It's a separate process altogether.
But this is, this is not going to be accepted under as a pilot program?
This is, you can't, it's totally premature to be talking about a pilot, okay?
Mayor, Mayor, comment?
Yes.
That, that would be part of a separate public hearing altogether. There's no pilot on the table.
There will be a separate public hearing if.
And if there is to be a pilot, that would have to be a separate public hearing.
Okay.
That's, that's not up for consideration tonight, or at this hearing at all.
Okay. And my understanding it was, because if that was the fact. Let me just finish the statement. That means unlike other traditional tax approaches, this project then would contribute zero monies for public education, which typically gets over 60% of, 60% of property tax payments, effectively not funding education and pushing the burden onto all the taxpayers that Mr. Mailly says that he's fighting for.
No. The analogy that occurs to me is, it's like trying to figure out your car payments before you even know if you're going to have a car. You know, it's completely premature to be talking about redevelopment. And when, if there is a redevelopment, that would be, I don't know how long, it would be in the future, and there would be a separate ordinance and a separate hearing to address that completely separately.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, Zoom.
Sharon Eckert.
Sharon, are you there?
Hi, am I there now?
Yes, we hear you. If you could say your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Sharon Eckert. I live at 15, 115 Heinz Point Road in Vineyard Haven, Massachusetts. But I, I lived at the Abbey for, my family was there from 1969 to 1984. Sorry, sorry, I'm getting emotional already. I was there when it was St. Mark Lutheran Church. My family lived there. So obviously, I have a lot of emotional connections to that, but more than emotional, personal feelings, I, I just, realizing the beauty of the place. When I lived there, I lived in a bedroom that had plastered cherubs all over the ceiling, a stained glass window, and would go town stairs in a parlor to play my mother's grand piano, in a parlor with frescoed ceilings, and we're just, I just wonder what would happen if it's torn down. Will it become like a big box office building? Would it become modern condominiums? What will it become if it's not the Abbey anymore? And I'm sorry that I'm so emotional, but it was a special place, and it is a special place. There are many, I think about all the architecture there. My younger brother in there actually worked as sextons for the church for a couple of years. And I polished all the wood paneling and the wood railings and the sconces and just all the beautiful places there. Just such a beautiful building. I would, do we want to put this into a dumpster? No? Have a big box or something put up? That's my, my question, I guess.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm so emotional.
It's okay. It's emotional. Okay, next, we have in-person, someone here in person. If you could say your name and. Okay, next we have in person, someone here in person, if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Bill Kostjak. I live at Six Crescent. Last week I had sent a, a email to the council and I'd like to just read that into the record. Over the past several weeks, I've been listening to the speakers from a pretty divided neighborhood. Obviously it's become a very polarizing issue. I've heard a number of speakers raising issues that appears to show that the project may not have been adequately thought through. Their issues well persuasive do not completely refute the benefits of such a project, which I don't believe is their goal. I've heard from local businessmen who was concerned about the big business entering the township. This is an eternal issue with COVID. All businesses need to reinvent themselves. So this alone can't drive the decision. I've heard from a very vocal owner who obviously wants to maximize his gains, so his voice needs to be discounted. I've also heard a neighbor who very vocally talked about bullying neighbors, not wanting to change and some sort of nefarious feelings. However, I know for a fact that his way of reaching out to the community was to send litigious threatening letters, which you have, to a neighbor, reach, let's see, to a neighbor that is just trying to protect his property. So I have to discount that as his arguments as well. I've also heard from a deeply divided township committee. So where there has been references of, of made possible improper action. I have no idea if any of that credibility, any of those references, but we are in an area where perception is more important than the truth. So where does that leave me and my community? I'm not against the Abbey project, however, I think that the scale is too large. I believe that this entire issue can be solved by one simple change. Increase the parking setbacks along the neighbors fences to 35 feet. The basic neighborhood complaint is that this project as it stands will decimate several of our neighbors' properties. Their right to quiet enjoyment of their homes, not to mention their property values, will forever be changed. If it can be changed, if, if, it can be changed in the future, uh, through, thank you, um, then so be it. But the township needs to make an emphatic statement for this, for the record, that it can and cannot be changed, the setback then, or cannot be changed. If they cannot, then this project needs to be wrote down to make those necessary adjustments so that the overall community can buy in. As I see it, the biggest issue regarding this project is about trust. Trust in our elected officials. I'm seeing several neighbors facing a crisis, a crisis not of their own making. You have the ability to help them. I'm sure you want to be looked upon as uniting the community, not dividing it. I'm sure RH wants to embark upon a project where the community is behind it, not having to take a defensive position. I, as a member of this community, want to be able to trust my elected officials, not second guess on what can happen to my property should some other situation arise. I implore you to do the right thing and allow the community to trust their elected officials. Thank you.
Thank you.
One final note is, I just like one final note. I'd like to say for record, I'm certainly for anyone trying to maximize the value of their property, but not at the expense of their neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Mayor, it's Peter. Is there any chance that, and Scott, speaking through their masks make it very difficult to hear them?
Okay, yes, we've told people they can fold their mask when they're speaking in here. That is their choice. Okay, next we have, do we have, I know the Donlins wanted, if they're on here, they wanted to go between 6:15 and 6:45 if possible.
I'll get them next. Next is Evan. Evan, you're sure you're muted? You're currently unmuted.
Evan, are you there?
I'm here, yep.
Okay, Evan, if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, Evan Carlson, 18 Crescent Drive.
Thank you. Go ahead, Evan.
Okay, thank you. I really appreciate everybody's time. I've lived at Crescent Drive, walking distance to the Abbey since 2010. My wife and I are for the Abbey Restoration Hardware Project. And while we may, you know, disagree with some neighbors that don't want the project to move forward as is or at all, you know, certainly it's, you know, friendly smiles and conversations as we all walk around the block during this pandemic and that hasn't changed. But in the, you know, 10 years that we've lived here, the Abbey has been abandoned, it's unkempt, and unfortunately, it's really an eyesore. It's obviously neglected and while it's remained unused, it's not generated any jobs, revenue, or a destination for us or the township. It's why I, I really think this opportunity for Restoration Hardware to rejuvenate the building and the business it will host is incredibly important. It's even more important considering, you know, that they're willing to invest while so many other businesses are reducing their footprint. As a Wells Fargo customer, I received notice the other day that they're closing their branch on Madison Ave just up the street. And I'm sure there are and, and will be more. It may be our last opportunity, just like that, that lady from Massachusetts mentioned, to preserve the Abbey. You know, I think that's extremely important. I'm not sure if we'll have another opportunity. It also speaks volumes. I, I do think in, in attending the call last week that Morris County Historical Society and the Preservation Commission also support the effort. They seem to certainly recognize that the Abbey will be in good hands with Restoration Hardware. And I know that's important for everyone, including all neighbors, the preservation of the Abbey. They're gonna make a significant investment to preserve it, to restore it, and actually increase the presence and value of this building. When researching the impact of similar Restoration Hardware gallery locations throughout the U.S., you can find this online, of course, you know, their, their plans, as is, you know, they weren't always unanimous. However, it's obvious that the adjustments Restoration Hardware made to the proposals were successful in meeting neighborhood needs. All of the galleries are successful for the community. My understanding is that Restoration Hardware is gonna continue to work. This isn't the final decision and will continue to work with the township on suggestions made by all neighbors and in particular, those that have properties adjacent to the Abbey. In fact, you know, the setback request, a potential increase does make sense and I, I absolutely do understand it. Finally, I would say that fixing the intersection in and of itself is a massive win. But no plan is perfect. While that's the case, I do support the Abbey Restoration Hardware Project and sincerely appreciate all of your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Evan. We appreciate your comments. Next, we have someone in person who I can't recognize. Who are you?
John McGinnley, 45 Crescent Drive. Good evening, everybody. Good news here, I won't take all five minutes. I just have a couple of points. I don't want to repeat what a lot of people already said, but my property actually is one of those properties that backed up directly to the Abbey on the Crescent side, where a lot of talk around the proposed parking is slated for. First, I want to thank Mayor Wilson, Mayor Murphy for actually coming out to a property, going in our backyard, getting our visual perspective of, of what that would look like. So thank you. As the committee is aware, you know, there's been a lot of strong opinions on this redevelopment project, which is no surprise. Unfortunately, you know, I think there has, has caused a little bit of a divide in our tight little neighborhood over this. But I want to make it clear tonight that the McGinnley family, you know, who live right there, we are not opposed to progress. That rumor is out there. We always will support what we think is the best interest of the township. You know, my concern from the get-go, when I first saw the map of the, of the redevelopment plan, it's just far too massive for the size of the lot. And that really was my concern. I believe the Abbey is what we need to preserve. But to build, to build something so massive on this lot has ripple effects. You know, for the developers, you know, they have no other options but putting parking by the home because of the structure and being so big. And that, those ripple effects really cause, in my opinion, security noise and likely concerns from that effect. You know, if the township committee adopts this plan, it will not be an opportunity to make major changes, such as we're talking about parking. I could appreciate the committee having concerns about not approving this plan and the fear of RH walking away. I just feel this plan did not write, it's not RH, but just this plan. So I strongly encourage the committee to go no to the plan and seek to produce the plan that is not overwhelming the property, the local residents, and the larger township community. Once again, thank you for your time, consideration, and listen to my thoughts.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Okay, next on Zoom, we have?
Lori and Frank Donlin.
Okay, Lori and Frankie Donlin, you are up. Please say your name and address for the record. Can you hear us?
Uh, Frankie Donlin and, and I am Peter.
Can't hear you.
We can hear you. Can you hear us?
Yes.
We can, I think. Go ahead.
Can you hear us?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Do you have it?
They have, they're in a location of poor connectivity.
Perhaps we should ask them to work on their connectivity and go to the next one.
Donlin and Donlin with their phone.
Yeah.
So the computer.
They can dial in that.
Maybe. Okay, I, I don't know Lori and Frankie if you can hear me, but if you could, um, if, if you could dial in by phone, we're having a little trouble hearing you if, if you're on your computer right now. So we're gonna give you a few minutes to work with your connectivity at your end and we're going to go to the next person who's here in person. We'll come back to you.
And I believe as a phone dial-in, it's star nine to raise your hand.
Okay.
Hopefully they heard us. Okay, if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Danielle McGinnley, 45 Crescent Drive. Good evening, Mayor and Township Committee. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. I recently started my 25th year of teaching. Like many of us, I'm more aware than ever of the changes in our world, the progress we're making and the obstacles we're facing. We've been called to be flexible, adaptable, compassionate, patient, and innovative. What hasn't changed is the need for us to read and learn. Dr. Seuss once said, "The more that you read, the more things you will know. The more that you learn, the more places you'll go." Having moved through phases of this redevelopment process, spoken to neighbors and committee members, attended meetings, read countless documents, explored various images, Facebook pages, a petition, and letters, I have read and learned a great deal. I've learned that there are various opinions about this project. I've learned that some folks are more open to hearing them than others. I've learned about our township's historical structures. I've learned of the negative impact projects such as this can have on local small businesses. I've learned of the uncertainty of potential traffic patterns and their negative impacts on the township. And I've learned that there's still time to get this project right. We have options. I do not object to the redevelopment plan as a concept. And like many, I do not want to see the Abbey demolished. Despite asking you to seek essential revisions to this proposal, I love the Abbey and hope it can be saved. For 12 years, my daughters have gazed at this castle from our backyard and imagined stories of princesses and the like. As they've grown, there's less talk of Cinderella in the castle and we've parted with some of their childhood toys and structures, such as their wooden playset. That's been passed on to new neighbors with the hope that they too will enjoy the playset and love our neighborhood and all its wonder. But the above are parts of memories, history, that will always be cherished, whether the toys, playset, or princess castle remain. Ideally, I would like to see the Abbey saved. But the size and density of this plan are far too excessive for the site and need to be reconfigured. Specifically, the proposed setbacks are unacceptable and the suggested buffers do not mitigate this major issue. I urge you to demand this plan be revisited so that the setbacks can be adjusted and those changes documented before any acceptance of this plan. I urge you to have the plan revisited to address the overall density, parking, and access points, as these cannot be changed once the plan is adopted. The current proposal is clearly overdevelopment. This is not what saving a historic property should be about. Yes, my home is directly impacted. But many of my concerns, and those shared by others, are much greater and will negatively affect those who do not live within sight of the Abbey. We've heard a lot about the types of changes that can be made to the proposal later and those that cannot. And the changes that need to be made cannot be accepted later. Thus, the proposed plan is not ready for approval. We need to secure the opportunity to carefully consider the changes this proposal requires. Or Restoration Hardware asserts this plan will save the Abbey, a portion of the building will be torn down, and another portion of the property forever changed by new buildings, lighting, parking, and pavement. Can't we be more innovative, more patient for the right plan? If saving this historic property is at the heart of this project, then save it while sparing the many sacrifices being asked of township residents. Can Restoration Hardware make adjustments that will suit both their business plan and our community? Can you please make sure that happens by voting no until the proposal is suitable? Please ask the planning board to address the concerns before voting on such an important decision. As we heard last week, many historical buildings have already been torn down. This is unfortunate, but there are opportunities to read and learn about these landmarks, this history. If it comes down to saving a building or doing what's best for many township residents, I urge you to choose the latter. I'd like to leave you with a final thought from a crowd favorite, the Lorax's own Dr. Seuss. Sometimes the questions are complicated and the answers are simple. I think this guidance applies here. The answer is simple. This overdevelopment plan is not what is best for Morris Township. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments.
Mark just mentioned that it's close to raining outside and you want to take just a couple?
No, no, it's not raining here. It's okay. I'm just saying if it does start pouring, you're gonna have to let everybody out.
Just do a break so people can get to their cars, but you'll keep us posted?
You will keep us posted. Okay, very good. Okay, the Donlins, can we?
That there on the bottom there, the telephone number, that might be the 212 number there?
Oh, we'll try that one. So I have a, a dial-in number, 212-729-7042. Can you give us your name and address, please?
They are unmuted.
And you need to unmute.
Usually when you dial in, the instructions are given to you or you.
They got the star nine, your hand is raised. The person with the phone number starting with 212, and I can't see the rest of it, if you can hear us, please join in.
Can I get the ask on you?
Okay, we're going to go ahead with in person and are we?
Just give it a little bit, there's maybe a little light.
Okay, can you hear me?
212-729, yes.
I'm in. I think I'm in.
Yes.
Name and address, please.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, my name is Frankie Donlin. I am here with my beautiful wife. We are in the mountains of Vermont, so this is, we're very happy that you're able to have this committee meeting the way that you're doing it because it allows us to participate. We live at 75 Canfield Road. You can hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, sorry about that. All right, so we feel like our home is likely the most impacted home by this redevelopment. 10 to 15 feet past our, our backyard fence, it will be a very busy driveway. We border the property over 100 feet. On the other side of the driveway will be the proposed restaurant. Our chief concern now and always has been quality of our everyday lives. In the spring, a few of the neighbors knocked on our door and they asked us to be a part of a group that was putting together concerns relative to the redevelopment. And of course, we, we participated. We had a number of discussions with the group and ultimately, we met with representatives from RH at the Abbey on June 20th. The meeting, in our opinion, was valuable. RH stated during that meeting on several occasions to prepare a full list of concerns and they would do their best to handle them any way that they could. There were on the table in front of us printed site plans. And so while the discussion began to focus on the traffic, we took some of those plans and we started to write a list of our specific concerns. We also highlighted proximity between our property and, and the intended build. The meeting ended with the RH planner asking me if he could take a picture of what we had written on the sheet and we had no problem with that. After the meeting, the RH planner sent around essentially the minutes or a recap to our group and told us in that recap that he would work with either us individually or if we would send him one comprehensive list. But it was clear that whatever we planned, they were willing to work with us. Eventually, RH contacted us individually and then. Eventually, RH contacted us individually, and they asked for us to participate in a Zoom meeting with them, which we accepted. On the call, there were several senior executives from RH, including the president and chief real estate and development officer, vice president, lead architect, the landscape architect, and several others. Basically, we talked and they listened. We gave them a laundry list of concerns that we had, run through most of them, not all of them, generator placement and the decibel level. We learned our lesson with build across the street, maintenance schedules, dumpsters and collection times, construction schedules and duration, traffic, quality of life concerns. These were going to be all new sights and sounds and smells that were now going to be part of our everyday lives. High parking lot lights that are now going to shine into our home. How are they going to address bugs and rodents and deliveries, driveway and parking proximity, Canfield driveways, no left turn towards residential streets, the enforceability of same, border fences and shrubs. And we talked about the section on Canfield between the nearest driveway and the Canfield extension. During the mansion in May, it was a disaster. People parked on that piece of land. That's our property. It has no curb, and they just parked up and down that section. I fear that will happen again, and we had to constantly repair the tire marks that were digging into the ground. Sinage, you know, no left turn, no parking, dead end, no turnaround, children of play, anything, just to keep our streets and our kids safe. RH then began speaking to us and they went and assured us that they would mitigate each of the concerns. They found low light to replace the high ones. They found special extraction exhaust fans.
Just wanted to let you know that. I can't see the sign.
Okay, I can't.
Sorry to interrupt.
They found special extraction exhaust fans. They built solid aesthetically pleasing fences. They would plant mature hedges. They would place dumpsters inside air-conditioned separate spaces to protect from the odors and the pests and so on. They had a remedy for every complaint. It was clear to us that they took the sheet, they went and they handled all of their due diligence, they got their answers for mitigation, and then they came back and they scheduled this call. They want to have, in our opinion, a long-lasting relationship with the neighbors and the township as a whole. They have a track record of success and commitment to restoration and respect of landmark properties. As a bordering neighbor heavily impacted by this project, we're confident the abbey will be professionally restored to the very last detail. We encourage the township committee to move this project forward, and while doing so, make the necessary changes to the appropriate legally binding documents that will ensure that our concerns and the concerns of our other neighbors are adequately addressed. We can't afford to have any of the issues slip through the crack and not get taken care of as this proposal moves forward through the local approval process.
Thank you, Mr. Donlin. I'm gonna have to cut you off. You're a little past five minutes. I know you can't see the signs, so.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
We welcome you to come back on the second round if you'd like to share more, but in the interest of fairness, we're keeping everyone to five minutes. So thank you for calling in, and we thank you for your comments.
Okay, no problem at all. I do think you should maybe give the bordering residents 10 minutes, but that's a decision that maybe should have been made before this started. But anyway, thank you for your time. I did send in a letter. I hope that you can adopt that letter into your.
You have a letter.
I just raised your hand.
Take that as well. Okay, next, do you have someone here in person who's gonna come up and share their comments? Can you say your name and address?
Richard Keller, Massimo's Hill One Condon Road.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We're also the committee members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to make a few comments. Obviously, my partners, my brother and I and sister are all concerned about the new restaurant coming in the area. I'm not here to complain about the fact that it's coming in. I do feel that there are a few comments that I need to make to make the committee and the neighborhoods understand what could possibly come with the restaurant. With almost 70 years' experience in Morris Township with rods, 50 of them myself, the following items I can pretty much assure you could happen. RH will find that it's almost impossible to survive in the environment that we have nowadays in our industry without outdoor dining. We have seen it continue to grow as a desire for the customers to have outdoor dining over the years, especially now since we've gone through this pandemic. I see in the future, every restaurant's gonna have to try to find some space outdoors, either that or open up their walls in some way. The restaurant is going to be 15,000 square feet. That much square footage is going to be extremely hard to support with only à la carte dining. Sooner or later, someone's gonna want to do a wedding. There's such a beautiful building as the abbey, and I'm just concerned that RH is gonna come back to you folks and say, "We would like permission to do this one event." If permission is given, I can just see a foot in the door, and they're gonna come back continuously, and eventually, if they're told no, well, if we can't do this event, then we're just gonna shut down and tear the building down. Also, as to their noise impact statement, they've stated that the last seating will be at 10:00 p.m. at night. The restaurant industry, having dinner out is normally figured to be an hour and a half to two hours plus for a meal. That puts you at midnight with people leaving the promises. Also, they're planning a bar. Are they gonna be closing the bar at 10 o'clock, or the bar still opens till 2:00, like every other license in the township? They have proposed three entrances for a 15,000-plus size building. Rods is approximately a 25,000-square-foot restaurant with one entrance on Madison Avenue. Madison Hotel has almost 200 guest rooms plus catering facilities for upwards of 500 people at a time with one entrance on Altern Bike Road. I don't understand why they would need three entrances and exits. If this project is approved, I just feel that there is a possibility that we may have to take it to another level to try to protest, but I do thank you very much for the opportunity to speak my piece, and I'm also a current resident of Parker Road, a prior resident of Parker Road, so I can understand everyone's feelings, personal feelings about this as a resident. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Keller, Mr. Keller?
Yes.
I just have clarification at one point, please.
Yes, sir.
If you could, go to the microphone. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
You said rods is 25,000, sorry, 25,000 square feet?
I believe it's all of our square footage, yes.
So that includes the main dining room upstairs and the railroad cars?
Railroad cars, I believe the red door tavern. This is an approximate number that I don't know exactly. I didn't measure it out.
I just wanted to be clear for everybody listening on what you were referring to.
Yes, yes. All the dining areas, plus we do have banquet facility room in rods.
So including that and 25,000 square feet, you're not?
I believe that was the number we came up with, yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have from our Zoom attendees.
So it's Ashley McMillifull. I'm probably butchering that last name. I apologize, but Ashley, you're up.
No worries. Can you hear me?
We can hear you. Go ahead, Ashley. If you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Ashley McMillifull, 5 Doe Hill Road.
Could you say it again, Ashley? I could not hear you on that.
5 Doe Hill Road.
Thank you.
Okay. Admittedly, I'm on the other side of the township, but I just wanted to voice my position that the abbey is iconic, valuable. It's a landmark in Morris Township, and I agree that the preservation, as much as can be done to preserve the building aesthetically from the, you know, it should be done. I'm in favor of redevelopment as opposed to the destruction of it, and I think it's in the township's best interest to find a redevelopment plan that honors its iconic stature. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley.
Thank you, Ashley. Okay, next, we have the next person in person here. You could say your name and address for the record.
Hi, I'm Bob Parker, 184 Mount Campbell Avenue.
Thank you, go ahead.
I have an offer. You may know that 184 Mount Campbell Avenue is a former general store in the 1800s. It was a stagecoach stop between Bernardsville and Morris Town, and has none of the setback requirements of today, but what I'd like to offer is someone to buy it, tear it down, join with a lot next door, and build a nice new modern house. I mean, I think that's really what we're talking about. We're talking about history in this township, and I think it needs to be respected. I just couldn't believe that someone would tear down a building that was built in the early 1900s, much less my house built in about 1850. I mean, this is history. This is all we have for our future and for our kids. And yes, the neighbors' concerns need to be heard and paid attention to. I encourage the council, of course, to work with them and work out some kind of consensus as best you can, and certainly I oppose the pilot. But so to me, I just, I think the abbey is critical to our history, and I think if we decide to let it go with a great investor who's willing to put in a lot of money and let it go, maybe take it down, we're just cutting another piece of our history that we will never gain back. And so I also failed to mention that my house at the bottom of Skyline is part of the Puthington Historic Area that the Environmental Commission, I'm sorry, the Historical Commission designated several years ago. So I mean, the township has a history of recognizing at least my area of the township, so I like to think that we have a track record which we can follow, which is that we respect these older buildings, absolutely pay attention to the neighbors, do the best you can. I hear some good examples of tonight, and I heard from a gentleman who's done some research that the potential tenant does work with the township or wherever they're putting their renovated buildings. So I think we've got a great chance to make it work. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments. Okay, do we have the 212 number again? You can call that.
Yeah, they're not raising their hand, but we have David Roth. You can unmute, David.
David, are you there? David? David, are you there? Okay, we're gonna come back to David and go to the next person in person. One second.
You.
Okay. David, we're gonna come back to you. I hope you can hear us, and we're going to come back to 212 also. Go ahead. If you could say your name and write an address for the record, please.
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor. My name is Frank McCann, 48 Crescent Drive. Been in the neighborhood 22 years. Last Wednesday, I was known as an objector. Prior to that, I think I was just an average taxpaying citizen in the town, hoping to have a voice, so thank you. Mr. Phillips last week talked about traffic flow. Not sure where he lives, but I was wondering if either he or the rest of the council have ever stood on Crescent Drive prior to COVID and stood on Crescent and faced Madison Avenue Monday through Friday through the hours of 5:00 to 6:00 p.m. If you had, you've seen the long line of cars on Madison Avenue heading west. At that hour, anybody's GPS would not take you up Kitchell Road coming from Woodland or Treadwell, like Mr. Phillips alluded to, to join that heavy traffic. It would probably take them up Fox Hollow Road to Canfield to west into the Crescent Drive neighborhood, maybe even onto Parker, and even onto Bradley, where there's a lot of kids who are out and about, walking, riding their bikes, screwing, doing their normal activity in that quiet neighborhood. Imagine this council, because of the traffic, someone might be late one night rushing to make their 5:00 or 5:15 or 5:30, 6 o'clock reservation, and their GPS takes them because of the traffic through our neighborhood. As a council, as a committee, I would be very concerned about rushing patrons trying to make their reservation. I found it interesting last week that someone mentioned how terrific it was to see the abbey so well-preserved, which in the end is what we all want. Yet I found it quite interesting that no one seemed to balk or object about how this plan will demolish a third of the abbey. That poor woman tonight up in Massachusetts, I wonder if she knows a third of her building will be gone. Was there any objection from the historical societies or others for the lack of preservation of that third of the building? I didn't hear any last week. It struck me, and I found it disturbing, that members of that society who were there to preserve a structure did not seem to address that fact. Along those lines, someone referenced the pep school last week and its wonderful centerpiece building as you enter their grounds. I had been there before and after the construction, and it looks great and well-preserved, and I think it improves their property greatly. I also noticed, however, that right smack in the front of that building, there's about 90 to 100 parking spaces right in the front. Those spaces weren't put on the side, they weren't put in the back, they are right out front with a lot of asphalt, a lot of concrete, but yet the beauty of that building and the property is not hampered. It looks like a precedent was made there to allow parking in front of a historic building and landmark. Why can't that same precedent be done at the abbey? Of course, it can, in our view, and it makes all the sense in the world to move the parking away from our most impacted neighbors and put on the other side closer to Canfield and Madison Avenue. Besides, that area will be closer to the wonderful overflow valet parking idea. Please move the parking. Save the trees on the side. Save the cost of taking down those trees. I greatly concur with my neighbors tonight, the Dinglers, the McGinleys, and others, who we all share the concerns of the density of the plan, the setbacks, the parking, and the access points. Judge Harper was tremendous last week. I invite you to go back and listen to his words. Let's sit down. Let's hash it out. Let's do it for the benefit of all of those who are considered here and find reasonable ways to work this through. He those words, he was terrific, and I think in the end, it was common sense. So to me, go to those neighbors, like Judge Harper said, and make those claims. But my points of the traffic flow is a concern. My points of people rushing to get through our neighborhood is a concern, and I certainly hope the council as a whole understands the potential liability that something like that could come. But in the end, help our impacted neighbors, and I appreciate your time and attention. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next up on Zoom is Paul. I show you're muted right now.
Are you there, Paul?
Paul, again, you raised your hand. I show you're currently muted.
Paul, you there?
Yeah, do you hear me?
Yeah, we got you.
Yep, sorry. Stepped away from the computer.
Yep, sorry. Stepped away from the computer. Address is Tank Crescent Drive. And Morris Township, of course. The questions I have, I sent a list of questions for Paul, the planner, and I hope he could comment on that. Everyone's talking about setbacks and their concerns with respect to the setbacks. The property essentially is going to be used in a zone that's an OL-5, which is the three other adjoining properties at the corner. And what I would like him to comment on is what is the building setback in a normal OL-5 setting with a commercial building from the street? What is the normal setback for a parking space from the street, but more importantly, parking spaces from adjoining properties, be it commercial and differ, and if there's a differential for residential? Also, with respect to the site plan as it's been submitted, there's very few specifics with respect to height of the buildings. And I hope you can try to itemize or be more specific with respect to the size of these buildings specifically. The scale and the impact to the immediate neighbors is the issue that I have. The concept, the idea, and the use is a very good, is a very good plan. But if we cannot mandate in this redevelopment plan that the council has voted on, where the setbacks cannot be addressed, where perhaps scale of the building is not either modified in a manner where it will be less of an impact to the immediate neighbors, then I feel you have to vote it down. But if you have the ability to be able to control that aspect, then yes, go for the plan. It's a great idea. We have people in the neighborhoods that made it a us against them. It's not that. You try to be a good neighbor and you try to understand their view of it. If someone has a 20-foot light stand in their backyard only 15 feet away, they should not be able to comment and say that those neighbors should take one for the team. Sorry, you put 20-foot light stanchions in your backyard, and then maybe you could take that position. I live on the side of Crescent Drive. That isn't affected by it. So I'm just trying to be a good neighbor. I think it's a great use of the plan, of the building. One thing to note, then, this is, this is consistent with RH's ability to work with people. I've been to their facility several times, excuse me, in Chicago. It's a beautiful facility, built right in the middle of the neighborhood. There were three neighborhood committees that they had to appease to be able to put that building, first off, preserve an historic building, I should say, to be able to use the gallery the way it is. And they did work with the neighbors. They have very limited dinnertimes. It actually ends 8:00 on Sunday, 9:00 on Saturdays. So 10:00 last seating, that seems a little stretch, especially in a neighborhood set. Secondly, they only serve wine and beer. So this has been described as a wine bar? Is it really a wine bar, or is it a bar? Let's call a spade a spade. Let's try to get that out on the table. So is it a bar that's going to be open till conceivably 2:00 in the morning? Or is it a wine bar where, you know, it's going to have a limited hours? The last suggestion I have is the rooftop setting of the Chicago facility is beautiful, and that is where their outdoors displays are. And there's a lot of this footprint that is dedicated to outdoor seating. Alls that does is push the building and the parking close to neighbors. Why not consider a rooftop setting for the outdoor? And for that matter, even put a restaurant up on the top floor looking out. So these are just suggestions that I offer. I like the idea. I just do not like the scale and the impact directly to our neighbors. And unless you have guarantees for that, I can assure you RH did work with Chicago, and it seems willing that they want to work with us. But you have to have a guarantee of that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have someone here in person who's going to come up and say their name and address for the record, please.
Adam Ray McKenna, living at 48 Crescent Drive. I do concur with my neighbors in regards to the scale, it is a little too large, and the setbacks. And I do, I live across the street from the neighbors that are directly impacted. And I do want to share from my second floor, where my children live and sleep. You know, the lighting can, I believe, will be a potential issue, especially if the trees are all taken down. And even if there are buffers, I can imagine they're going to be as tall to kind of obscure the light that we are going to have in our windows. And then as a mother of teenage daughters who recently, twins, have gotten their licenses, you know, I'm just concerned about the traffic that does occur at that hour. You know, we've been driving from our area all the way across in the past, you know, to go to Freeland Heisen for sports. And it's just a nightmare at that hour to get across town. And just turning left to go to that part of the township is problematic at that hour. So I don't know how the traffic can be alleviated, but it's something that you need to consider as you consider this plan. And I also hope that we can figure out a way to work with our neighbors. Because I have to tell you, and I know that Mark and Kathy, you both visited Jim and Danielle, and thank you for doing so. I wish you'd have done it sooner, but thank you for doing it. I think that if you lived in their homes, you would be upset with this option. And I don't understand why the parking can't be moved to another location. But either as a may, I do think that taking down all the trees and not having a better buffer or better setback is really a problem. So thank you for your time, and good luck with your decision.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next up?
Next, I see Nick Rasioppi. He's got his hand raised. Nick, I show you're muted.
I'm off. Hello?
Are you there?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we can hear you. Go ahead. Please say your name and address.
Nick Rasioppi, 51 Campfield Road.
Thank you, Nick. Go ahead.
Okay, first, the housekeeping item. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm a member of the Riker Danzig Law Firm, and a colleague of mine represents Restoration Hardware. I want to thank all the council members for their tireless efforts on behalf of the community. I know what you guys are doing, and it's not easy, so I appreciate that. And so today, I'm not speaking as a lawyer, but as a resident. I live on Campfield Road, and I could not be more in favor of this project for many reasons. First, I believe this is really a once-in-a-lifetime project. As a real estate lawyer with a national project, a practice, I can tell you that every town in our county, every town in our state, and every town in the country would want a project like this, especially right now. It's a testament to our township that Restoration Hardware chose our community and the abbey. And I believe we should welcome them with open arms, as with would any other town. If you have not done so, I implore you to visit or at least study the other Restoration Hardware galleries to understand the quality and attention to detail that Restoration Hardware brings to every gallery. More importantly, as Mr. Phillips pointed out, it will be an enhancement to and hopefully revitalize this corridor. I'm really concerned when I drive down Madison Avenue and see all the vacancies. In addition to the abbey, there's TD Bank, there's Wells Fargo, there's Jacobs Engineering, there's Honeywell, which is on the next street. MetLife on Madison Avenue is half-empty. And the MetLife on Park Avenue, although in Hanover, is empty. These vacancies are not new. Unfortunately, to me right now, Madison Avenue does not have a great look. And you don't need to be in the real estate industry to know, especially with COVID and online retailers, there'll be many more vacancies to come as retailers continue to fall. And people, the acceleration of people working remote is incredible. So if not Restoration Hardware, then what use? I can tell you, I'm on the front lines, and they're just not there. Retailers getting hurt by Amazon and online retailers, suburban office buildings are dead or dying. And even if somebody was thinking about building a standard sit-down restaurant during COVID, which they are not, they need a liquor license, which goes for about $1 million before they build a new restaurant. It's not happening. So I ask again, if not Restoration Hardware and they're a nationally acclaimed gallery, what is the plan for this property and for all the other current and future vacancies? Mr. Arvenidi suggested maybe make them condos. To me, that's really an unfortunate and myopic view. Because if that's the plan, then what are we doing with the two banks, with Jacobs, with Honeywell, with MetLife? Are they going to be all condos or convenience stores? They're not going to be parks. Something's going to be happening. Something has to happen. So, and you've heard from Mr. Donlin firsthand. I deal with developers all the time. And I hear from Mr. Donlin and his testimony about just how RH was willing to work with the neighbors, how many times they met, what they considered, taking pictures of all their notes. This is how we deal, and I'm confident about two things. One, that RH will work to the extent they can. At some point, it becomes unfeasible and you don't have a project. But to the extent they can, they will work with them. And two, that because I'm in the real estate world, I know that all the neighbors' concerns will be guaranteed because they'll be in a redevelopment agreement. Lights will not be fed on to the neighbors' property because they'll be shielded. There's a bunch, we do, we live, we live in a densely populated area in New Jersey. We have these protections. We know how to put them in redevelopment agreements. They will be guarantees. Every one of the protections that Restoration Hardware agrees to will be guaranteed. So in light of all this, in my humble opinion, it would be an absolute tragedy to reject Restoration Hardware or to make it too hard for them to succeed and lose this golden opportunity to enhance and revitalize the area and sit by and watch the abbey be demolished. Because they ain't saying nothing about lost jobs, which we all can surely use at this time. So I implore the council to adopt a plan and a plan that puts guarantees into what Restoration Hardware agrees to as to address the neighbors' concerns. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have the 212 number is the other person.
So the dialing 212-729-7042?
Yes.
You need to unmute.
212, that, that number means unmute. Please say your name and address for the record.
Lori Donlin, 75, Campfield Road. I'm the bordering neighbor on the Campfield extension.
Thank you.
Just making sure you can hear me. Okay, great. I'm just gonna, I won't take the full five minutes. I'm going to continue the comments that my husband started a short time ago. I will say that having lived in this home for five years, when we first started to hear about development in the abbey property, we or I, as someone who is resistant to change, started out being vehemently opposed to any development there because we've enjoyed the privacy, the quiet, and the view of this beautiful building from our home. Obviously, that is an unrealistic and unfair position and view, particularly to the person who owns the abbey property, who has, you know, been unable to develop it for all these years. The truth is, this site has been declining and barren for too many years. And we are really thankful to see a developer of this caliber coming in and being willing to inject positive life back into the space in a manner that's really besitting the grandeur and the aesthetic beauty that this historic building and our township deserves. We really encourage our neighbors to continue to present their reasonable concerns to Restoration Hardware and to the Township Committee because tonight is, from my understanding, not the last night to be heard. And we understand and sympathize with the concerns that everyone border, in particular, bordering the property has. We just want to thank you, the Township Committee, for your time and your diligence in considering this redevelopment. We trust that you'll protect us and ensure this process will end positively for us, for our neighbors, and for the township. And with your oversight, we're confident that this Restoration Hardware redevelopment will be a wonderful addition to our community. We thank you so much for the time. We knew we might have connectivity issues, so we've sent in a letter to the Township Committee as our official response and stating our official concerns, just so that you have them for the record. But, you know, as someone who really loves our home, loves living where we live, loves having, raising our eight-year-old son in that home, we have to say that we feel very reassured by the conversations that we've had with the Restoration Hardware folks and how they plan to address the concerns that we have. And more than anything, we think having something of this magnitude in terms of stature and aesthetic approach is the right thing to do. We sure as heck don't want to have condos behind our house or see the abbey torn down. So thank you so much for your time. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, I know I see Mr. Caputo, but we do need to give everyone who has not spoken for one time the opportunity. And I believe we have Billy Hughes. Is that the next person?
Yes, Billy Hughes. You've been unmuted. You can unmute on your end.
Yes, hi, Billy Hughes. Can you hear me?
Yes, Billy. Go ahead. You can say your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Billy Hughes, 43 Crescent Drive.
Go ahead.
All right, so the back corner of my lot juts up to the back corner of the abbey lot. And, you know, listening to what everyone's saying, I mean, everyone obviously has an opinion. Everyone has a lot of, I think, salient points on the issue. But I guess my concerns obviously are not different from the other neighbors that are directly next to the abbey property. My concerns are traffic, especially in the evening. My concerns are the lights, the density on the lot. And, you know, I hear people saying, you know, that Restoration Hardware has a history of working well with communities, and that's all well and good. But I guess my question would be, you know, they obviously have done this sort of thing numerous times before. All the issues that the neighbors are raising, in my mind at least, are not things, you know, that should come as a surprise. And so I guess my question, or my comment, is, you know, if they are willing to work and if we are going to have these quote-unquote guarantees, why is it not just in the plan? Why is it not baked in at this point already? I mean, I certainly agree. I don't want to see the abbey torn down. I don't want to see condos. So again, I'm not, I'm in favor of the redevelopment project, but it really just does seem, and it feels, as somebody who, you know, juts up against the abbey property, it just really does seem like we have not been considered as fully as we should be. And, yeah, I guess that's really all I have to say. I mean, it just, it seems to me, you know, this attitude of take one for the I mean, it just, it seems to me, you know, this attitude of take one for the team, all of that, that's well and good, but it's not really right. I think if anybody asks themselves if this was up against their property, you know, would they be happy with the plan as it stands now? And I think if anyone answers that honestly, the answer would be no. And so that's really all I have to say. But thank you for my time and thanks for considering.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, next, we have...
Jessica Brennan.
Okay, wait, wait, we got somebody else in person here.
All three have spoken there.
Oh, they all have spoken?
Yes.
Okay. We're going to finish up the people who have not yet had their first time. I can't see back there, so.
Jessica Brennan. Jessica Brennan.
Jessica Brennan. Okay, Jessica, if you could say your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Jessica Brennan. I live at 7 Crescent Drive.
Go ahead.
Okay, I am speaking on behalf of my husband, Ryan, and I. As mentioned, we live on Crescent Drive in the immediate vicinity of the Abbey. And I will state that we are both in full support of the redevelopment plans and the project with RH. We feel that this is the best possible realistic option for the Abbey. In a perfect world, certainly, it would be nice to have the building maintained as a standalone historical building or a cultural center. But we certainly understand that in the modern world, that's not realistic, nor does the township have the funds to properly maintain it as the building deserves. Therefore, having RH come in and be willing to commit such a significant sum of money to this project is a better outcome than we could have ever anticipated. In our opinion, this is the equivalent of a for-profit historical preservation slash renovation. Additionally, given the fact that both the township and the county historical preservation societies have expressed their approval of the project, speaks volumes to its credibility. A project with RH will put Morris Township and the greater Morristown area on the national map. If you look at the other locations of RH galleries, they're in not only the most, you know, popular cities, but the most affluent cities and suburbs in the country. So as also has been stated by another resident, we should be honored to have RH interested in our community. But with that, I'm not saying that by any means they should be given a free pass to do whatever they please, but also has been stated and repeated numerous times, RH is clearly committed to being a good neighbor and willing to make the adjustments for a successful partnership. If we deny this redevelopment, we believe that we may never have another opportunity like this, as clearly RH can walk away and go to another community that will gladly welcome them. We strongly believe that many of the objections that have been raised can be directly addressed by RH, as evident by the family who lives at 75 Canfield, who has already worked with them. I also think, it goes without saying, that it's completely understandable that any neighbor who is directly adjacent to the property would certainly take issue with this. But unfortunately, this commercial property was already there when our houses and neighborhood was built. So I think, you know, we have to understand that change is inevitable. And also has already been stated, no plan is going to be perfect or able to appease everyone. But personally, we feel that the benefits outweigh the risks. And if that is the case, then we should move forward with the plan. Also has been stated by several other commenters, the Madison Ave corridor is clearly in need of and hopefully in the process of a redevelopment plan, process. And I don't mean redevelopment in the legal sense, but just in general. Obviously, there's numerous vacancies and many eyesores along the corridor. So as was stated by one of the first commenters, this would establish the precedent of what personally we would like the direction of the community to move in. We're not in favor of banks, gas stations, fast food restaurants, medical buildings, or large office buildings with empty parking lots. And certainly, we don't want any more multifamily housing. That being said, in summary, we would urge you to approve the redevelopment plan so that we do not lose this opportunity. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have...
Patricia Collins.
Patricia Collins. Please say your name and address for the record.
I'm unmuting. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, Patricia Collins, 4 Greendolls Road, and I'm a 45-year resident of the township. I heartily approve of the redevelopment. First, it's about time. I hope our beautiful structure will be preserved. And second, what's the alternative if demolished? Another gas station, a bank? The banks aren't staying anyway. And also, we are bookended by Madison and Morristown. And they have beautiful avenues with restaurants and shops. Why can't we do the same? And that may encourage other investments in the town. So in short, it's a win-win. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, next, we have, we're still...
Emily Vincent.
Emily Vincent, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please say your name and address for the record.
My name is Emily Vincent, and I live at 71 Canfield Road.
Thank you. Go ahead, Emily.
All right, so I lived at 71 Canfield Road since 2001. This is where I grew up and also where I now currently live. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, my brother, and my sister. We're all co-owners currently of the house. So first, what I would like to emphasize in my comments here is that no one is against preserving the Abbey. I feel like, right now, it kind of seems like our two options here are putting the Abbey in a dumpster or building a massive development that infringes on the privacy and livelihood of its neighbors. And I just want to stress to the board and also to all of the other residents that these aren't the only two options that we have. We all want to see the Abbey be preserved because we all think it's a beautiful building that's really important to our community. So I can see why many neighbors that are not directly adjacent to the Abbey, such as I am, my front lawn actually faces the Abbey. I can see why many neighbors that aren't directly adjacent would think that this would be a great idea. And to be honest, if I had the option of a wine bar within walking distance of my residence, I'd probably think that was an awesome plan as well. But this development is literally in my front yard. And the lights and the noises and the smells of this restaurant store combination will be directly outside of my bedroom window. So I'm not really sure how I'm expected to sleep when cars are going to be starting up and pulling out of a parking space that directly faces my bedroom window up to and past 10:00 PM, right, which is when RH would close, but not even necessarily when employees would be leaving. So we're looking at 10:00 PM, 11:00 PM, midnight, that cars would be making noise, pulling in and out, lights, literally headlights shining in and out of my bedroom. I find that the setbacks on this plan are wildly inappropriate. And to add insult to injury on this, during the last meeting, there was a discussion of taking down mature trees in favor of putting in low-lying shrubs to kind of get rid of the headlight issue. However, not only is a shrub not nearly enough to compensate for these really small setbacks, but in addition to that, taking down mature trees is also going to expose neighbors to even more light pollution on the upper levels of their house, which is where they're sleeping. So I don't think right now is the right time to pass this plan. I understand that the board continually says that edits to the plan are possible. However, prematurely passing this plan as it is right now takes away our legal course for us to enforce changes that Restoration Hardware does not want to put in. And for me, I don't think that makes sense at all for us to give up that protection and rely solely on the goodwill of Restoration Hardware. From a lot of the other comments that have been made and some other neighbors' experiences, it seems like Restoration Hardware is excited at this opportunity and is in no rush to drop it. And I think if they're given the option between not being able to develop the Abbey and making an alternate plan that sets up for a good relationship with all the neighboring properties, Restoration Hardware would be more than happy to make this work for everyone. It just seems to me that up until this point, the neighbors have had little to no say in this plan overall, while the developers have gotten to have a lot of input into it. So what I find most frustrating overall about this whole situation is that this easily could have been a win-win situation for everyone involved, for the board, for the neighborhood, for the developers. We can preserve the Abbey, but this is not the right way for us to be doing it. So I implore the board to vote against this plan. Not to vote against preserving the Abbey or redeveloping the Abbey, but to vote against this over-large invasive plan that shows a severe disregard for the safety and privacy and comfort of the neighboring homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Okay, next.
Looks like that's it as far as hands raised on the Zoom call.
Okay, so then we can...
Can you just double-check and say if there's anybody out there, press star nine and just let them know?
Okay. If there's anyone who's an attendee who would like to speak, who hasn't at this point, please raise your hand. If you're dialing in, please dial star nine to raise your hand. No one?
Yeah, Michael Killen.
We've got a Michael Killen.
Michael Killen. Okay, Michael, if you could say your name and address for the record, please. Can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you fine. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Michael Killen, 22 Wood Road, Morris Township. Somewhat of a neighbor of Mr. Graysales and met him many years ago when he was on this side of the microphone. I voted for him numerous times, and I know he's a pragmatic and thoughtful guy, so I'm looking for him to live up to, and the rest of the board to live up to, the new regime that you have in place with your transparency, with your thoughtfulness, with your thoroughness, all of which is very much appreciated by the township residents, you know, in contrast to some extent to past boards. So thank you for that. I've been a resident of the township since 96. I grew up in Morristown. I'm intimately aware with many of the manor homes on Madison Avenue, having graduated from Bailey Ellard, taken classes at Fairleigh Dickinson in Twombly Hall, and have a deep appreciation for history, architecture, art, and design. I've spent 40 years as an art director, 10 of which were in the retail space when I worked for Conran's, a home furnishings chain based in Europe, Britain, as well as Tiffany and Company, both of which dealt with high-end merchandise, quality design, et cetera. And I'm somewhat aware of Restoration Hardware, but took the effort to look at all of their recent restorations in other cities. I can't agree more with the gentleman from Canfield Road, Mr. Rasioppi, and Curry from the Morris County Historical Society, and many of the other speakers, to recognize that this is indeed the last great effort to save the Abbey. I feel greatly for the last speaker, living adjacent to the property and the challenges and the fears she must be experiencing. But I believe that, you know, there's a lot of technical expertise, both in Restoration Hardware and in the incredibly competent architectural firms and the craftsmen they work with. I'm sure that lighting, things like lighting, it's not like sticking a 60-watt bulb in your face and that's the end of it. These systems are highly sophisticated. Landscape design is a highly sophisticated craft with all of these things that are obviously able to be brought to bear by a company with the resources that Restoration Hardware has and the track record they have. To me, it's a slam dunk. And I really want to see this project go through. I feel for the immediate neighborhood. But having known many people in the past, in my past, that lived along Canfield, Crescent Drive, Bradley, Parker, that whole neighborhood. As I recall, as a young man, a teenager, many of the parents there regarded Rod's Ranch House. Mr. Keller spoke earlier. He knows full well that many of those residents treated that as like their own personal clubhouse. It was a great asset to their neighborhood. They enjoyed each other's company there. If you see what Restoration Hardware do, you know, the fusion that they are putting together between retail, hospitality, and the pleasurable part of our life that is dining, you see that fusion. I believe this will be a home base for many of the residents of Canfield. I can see them celebrating their lives there, the passages of time, the important milestones in their life. I can't believe they won't be fully enjoying it for many, many long years to come. So as someone who can appreciate the arts, the crafts, I think it's all going to be in full bloom here. And I strongly urge the board to put in place all the provisions, all the protections, all the things that are necessary, as the judge said last week. Do the due diligence, get it right, and let's have this be a wonderful new start for the township and that stretch of Madison Avenue, which as Mr. Rasioppi said, is one tired stretch. And it's time for the township to pull its weight and stop relying on Morristown to provide all the entertainment. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on Zoom that we haven't heard from yet? No? Okay, in that case, Mr. Caputo? If you could say your name and address for the record.
My name is Remo Caputo, 56 Canfield Road. Again, for the record, I object to the format of this meeting. I believe that the residents should have the ability to speak directly to the professionals, ask a question, and get a direct answer, and be able to follow that up with another question. That being said, I also feel that the way this is portrayed as a all or nothing, I know almost nothing about Restoration Hardware, except that everything that was said today, how willing they are to listen to the neighbors and work with the neighbors. And that's a wonderful thing, except that when they made this application, they didn't make it through a planning board or some application where the neighbors could be involved. They had three years of working, quote, behind doors, behind closed doors, with the township or whatever, so that no one in the neighborhood knew what was going on. They could gather this plan, in essence, in secret. Okay? I only found out about accident, I found out about this plan. And then when I brought it up and all the neighbors, mentioned it to the neighbors, then they found out about it. No one knew about what was going on. If they were so anxious to work with the neighbors, then they should have advised all the neighbors at the beginning. And we wouldn't be standing here right now. We would have had worked out anything that needed to get worked out before. This plan has, would have been passed in April had we not objected to the fact that this thing was going on without our knowledge. Now we're here and we feel that, as Judge Harper said, this needs to get referred back to the planning board and have some hearings so that we can reduce this plan to something that makes sense for the neighborhood. Everyone's talking about, oh, well, it's not this, it's nothing. So is Restoration Hardware saying that if we don't get this 100% plan, we're gone? Or are they willing to sit down and with, in some kind of environment where we can make suggestions, where professionals can make suggestions, and make changes that make sense? Last week, I heard the Historical Society say, well, that the Abbey was historic with three reasons, and one of them wasn't the grounds. Yet, when they talk about, oh, we can't touch the front of the grounds because it's historical. So the back of the grounds is not historical, where the setbacks are, but the front is. You can move all that parking to the front. There is a lot of things that can happen. I still find it incredible to believe that this board is going to allow valet parking across the street and have valets, 18-year-old guys running back and forth across Madison Avenue, parking cars at night. I mean, I find that insane, bizarre. Now, you heard Mr. Keller from Rod's, and he's right, okay? And I've been in this business for 40 years. What's going to happen is that they're going to come back to you and they're going to say, we can't survive unless we have outdoor dining. We can't survive unless we have catering. We can't survive unless we have weddings. And if you don't know how to do that, we're going to have to shut down and abandon the Abbey, and all of these terrible things are going to happen. The world will come to an end. And you're going to say, oh, well, listen, if you're going to have to shut down, we're certainly going to allow you outdoor dining. We're certainly going to allow you catering. We're certain you'll allow you to have events because you have to survive and we have to protect the Abbey. And the plan itself provides for variances. Variances and as far as use variances, as I was talking to Mr. Carlson, those come back to the council, but other variances come back, don't come back. They go to the planning board. So this thing is not in stone. You have the nose of a camel in the tent. You have basically a Trojan horse that's coming in, they're going to drop this thing here, and they're going to say, okay, this is very nice, but three years from now, we're not going to be able to survive without this, we're not going to be able to survive without that. And you will have a totally different item than you have right now. Those things can be addressed. I'm not saying that this shouldn't happen. I'd like to see the Abbey stay too. I would love to see green acres by it, make it some kind of public place, but that's probably not going to happen. But the thing is, what needs to happen right now is that this board needs to refer this thing back to the planning board. This plan is not ripe for passage. And if you're going to, and you can ask Mr. Carlson, if you want to change the setbacks, this plan cannot be, it's a substantial change. He said that once before. It would have to be voted down and started. But that's not a big deal. You vote it down and you go back, you make the changes, you go back to the first reading and second read. So, I feel that what's really important at this point, this plan is not ripe to go forward. It needs to be reconsidered with the, if the abbey, if Restoration Hardware is so willing to talk to the neighbors, which I hope they are, then we need to have, we go back to the planning board and get that taken care of. This plan is not ready to go. I have a lot more to say, but I'm giving my time.
You do get another term?
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Is that Mr. Maoli?
Yes.
Do we have anyone else on Zoom? Okay, so we're on the second terms now. So, if there's somebody on Zoom who's got a second term?
First term.
Is that Mr. O'Reilly? Okay, well, we're slightly out of order here, but we're going to go with Mr. Maoli and then come back to Zoom. So, if you can say your name and address for the record.
So, my name is Tom Maoli. I live at 85 Rock Cidicus Road in Far Hills, New Jersey, and I am the owner of the abbey. And while I came here tonight, as I was here a couple weeks ago, to present and just have a logical, common sense conversation with the board, you know, this thing has turned into a comedy show. We have Mr. Remo Caputo who's standing up here and talking about repositioning and how this is going to cause all kinds of traffic and how the, he's basically testing the integrity of the board, saying that things were done behind the scenes. This is the way a redevelopment plan happens in any project, in any property. So, the board did nothing wrong. I commend the board for looking at Restoration Hardware's proposal. You know, and then, you know, I find it funny that he stands arm-in-arm with Mr. Keller and talking about how they're going to come back to the board and tell them that the abbey's not going to work and Restoration Hardware's not going to work, and they're going to have outdoor dining, and they're going to have to have weddings there, and they're going to have to have this, when Mr. Keller is in front of the board to try and get 150 units of apartments because he's saying his business doesn't work anymore. So, don't you think that's kind of contradictory? I think it's hysterical. So, it's turned into a comedy show. So, what we're doing is, we have people who don't like the project, who want to come up here and delay it, and they want to test the integrity of the board, when the reality of it is, is they're the same people that voted this board in. You guys didn't walk off the street. You were voted in. You were voted in by popular vote, by the people of the town. And they voted you in because they trusted you. So, the decisions that you're making are for the best interest of the town. And while I feel bad, listen, I feel horrible for the woman who came up on the screen on Zoom and talked about the lights, and she lives across the street, and the people who pull out at 10 and 11 o'clock at night. The only thing I want to say, and I don't remember her name, but I want to say that I owned this building for almost 10 years. And I can tell you that when it was fully occupied as an office building, there were 250 cars a day coming in and out of there. There were deliveries all day long, paper deliveries, copier deliveries, MRI deliveries, people coming in with their children with wheelchairs into the MRI center. Those offices were open until 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night. Did she not see that when she moved there? Or is this an illusion? So, I think the board needs to consider all that, and they need to consider the people who are objecting with this project because the reality of it is, is if you search the universe, forget about the redevelopment process and the project that's at hand and up on the board. But if the board were to sit in here today and have a meeting and say, you know, we have this piece of property that's sitting on Madison Avenue, it's the abbey. It's a historical building. It's beautiful. It's the pinnacle of our town. Everyone knows about it. What are you going to do with this building? You can search the universe and you're not going to find a better tenant and a better user than Restoration Hardware. Someone that's going to come in and meticulously put that building back together, piece by piece. And if that is the intent of this board and this town, then I suggest that you vote for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Maoli?
Mr. Maoli, Mr. Maoli, before you go, may I say something?
I prefer that we not.
I just want to, I feel I have to address one thing. I don't like your characterization of this hearing as a comedy show. It's a very serious hearing.
Well, it's a very serious hearing.
You're taking comments very seriously. I understand your comments. I understand your comments. But every, but every citizen has their right to say their case.
And I agree.
Neighbor has their right to say their case.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Graysell. We're going to move on.
But if they are arm-in-arm.
Smalley, we're done.
We're the supporter who wants to build 150 units of property.
Smalley, we are done. Thank you.
I understand her.
Next up, we have Mr. Dingler?
Yes.
Oh, Mr. O'Reilly. Sorry, we're going back to our back-and-forth. Mr. O'Reilly, are you there?
Yes, unmuted, except for my.
If you're unmuted, we hear you. Please say your name and address for the record.
O'Reilly, 50 Independence Way. This may have been covered by others or maybe in the plan somewhere, but I was wondering, the present owner might not be the owner forever, and the present businesses or the contemplated businesses might not be the businesses forever. So, what happens if any of these businesses go out of business and you need to put in a different kind of business? What sort of provisions are in the plan to handle that? Since it seems to be tied to the sorts of conditions that these businesses would create.
Okay, thank you. We've added that to the list of questions that Mr. Phillips is going to answer when we are done. Is there anything else, Mr. O'Reilly?
No, can you still hear me?
Yes.
Except that, yes, it has happened infrequently in this discussion, but I did put on the chat that persons should not reflect upon the motives of other persons.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. O'Reilly. Is, do we have anyone out? We have no one else from Zoom up for the first time, correct?
No, we have a Christine Ostapiak. I may be butchering that last name, but Christine, you've been unmuted.
Okay, Christine, you're up for your first time.
Thank you very much.
Name and address for the record.
My name is Christine Ostapiak. I'm at 15 Bradley Road. So, I am in close proximity to the abbey. I just want to say that as a concept, I think the Restoration Hardware proposal is an excellent idea. I don't want to see the abbey demolished. I want to see it restored. And I think that the proposal that is in place to do a gallery, the concept would restore the grandeur and the elegance that was once Millionaire's Row, so I really applaud that. I do have similar concerns as the other neighbors have voiced already. I don't want to rehash that, but I would like to see the development plan take that into consideration to protect the neighbors and their property and their privacy. What I want to ask that hasn't been raised yet, I was happy to hear that the neighbors directly impacted, were contacted by Restoration Hardware and had meetings to discuss their concerns and had addressed them. My question is, what will we do going forward? Will we still be good citizens of the neighborhood and continue to work with the neighbors if additional concerns come up? And second, will the interior of the abbey be restored? When I was there at Mansion in Maine, 2017, I was just in awe of the ceiling and the foyer. And I'm wondering if that sort of preservation will also take place. Those are my questions. Thank you very much for hearing me, Madam Mayor and committee members. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard.
Thank you. We appreciate your comments and your questions, and Mr. Phillips is writing them down and will be answering them soon. I believe we're next would be Mr. Dingler. Am I correct? Mr. Dingler, come on up.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thanks, Council, once again. So, as I said, I'm Jim Dingler. I live at 47 Crescent Drive. I was the person that was, one of the ones that was talking about the potential to relocate the parking lot to a different location to lower the impact on neighbors to a satisfactory area. And I think Mr. Caputo was making some of the same points. So, moving on, I just want to, you know, just a moment's worth of background. I think, you know, certain people, the developer, others have looked at the dissenters here as a bunch of renegades, people that should just, you know, sort of get with the program. And so, I just want to provide a little bit of data on that as well. I think it's, I think it's probably evident from some of the folks that have spoken, but, you know, early on, we decided to test the validity and the broader support for our position through a petition that was, would encourage the Township Council to vote no to the redevelopment plan. So, we did have a very good turnout in that petition. We provided the data to the Township Council. We had 287 signers of that petition that were also pulled fast to requesting that the council vote no, is the way that it was stated in the petition. So, I just want to remind you that we're not a bunch of renegades. There are some very, very, very legitimate concerns, especially about the immediate neighbors. And broader township interest has been validated by the citizen voters through their participation in this petition. Okay, I also want to come back to a thing that's been touched on by the judge and by Remo. And our overarching request here is that the Township Committee refer the redevelopment plan for voting to the planning board for further consideration, to work out these issues of which there are many. Many of the neighbors, as noted in the petition results, do not support the redevelopment plan in its current form. It's not that we don't want Restoration Hardware. We just want them to modify and lessen the impact of their particular plan. The objective of this redirecting to the planning board would be to reconcile differences between supporters and those that are opposed. The planning board could oversee the process to consider resolution of targeted issues between RH and the residents. The plan could then be brought back to the TC for a vote. So, send it to the planning board before you vote on it. That's our overarching request. I also want to say that, in my opinion, the current development plan is not consistent with many of the qualitative considerations in the master plan. To wit, it does not protect, does not provide adequate protection to adjacent single-family homes. It's not sensitive to the development patterns of nearby residential neighborhoods, and the intensity is not consistent with the residential patterns of openness and suburbanness. We believe that the Township Council should have a very high hurdle for passage of this redevelopment plan. We also believe that the bordering neighbors are shouldering a very disproportionate share of the burden on this redevelopment. No material changes have been made to the development plan, to my understanding, and have been agreed to. There are many shortfalls to the plan, and I know it's been sport to kind of shoot down Peter Stack's piece, but I think he brought up some very good points, and I don't think they should be offhandedly shut down. So, finally, and to repeat, we ask that the redevelopment plan deserves to be held over for further review before the TC voting so that the planning board can take a working group approach to address shortfalls of the plan and the process and bring the two sides together in a closer way. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
So, we have on Zoom.
Are you completely finished or are you going to?
No, I'm very finished.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dingler.
Thank you.
Justin Miller?
Hello, can you hear me?
Justin Miller, are you there?
Yes.
Okay, Justin?
Can you hear me?
Say your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Justin Miller, 50 Crescent Drive.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. So, first of all, I'd just like to thank you for your time and the committee for their time over these past few meetings that we've had on this. My wife and I have been on, unfortunately, over Zoom for hours upon hours, it seems, listening to what amounts to, I guess, very passionate arguments on both sides. And I think it's really put into perspective the process that this needs to go through when we're talking about such a large, intense development within what is a residential area. So, let me preface this first by saying, not against the idea of the RH concept in principle, but is perfectly clear and has been made clear by many neighbors who are greatly impacted, is that the intensity seems to be more intense than what should be allowed in this space. So, when I think about things like setbacks and when I think about the proposal of setbacks to be 10 to 15 feet, my question is this, you did mention that, you know, moving forward, there could be opportunity for that to change. Is that true? Is my first question. Because that really seems like an issue that, if solved, would be a huge step in the right direction for some sort of compromise between everyone. So, what we've heard here, you know, I'm not going to get up here and shout about it, but there needs to be some sort of middle ground. And I'm wondering what sort of protections are allowed for those impacted neighbors should this move forward? If there aren't protections that include things like the setback issue, like the parking issue, then maybe this plan isn't ready for prime time, as they say. So, that's my piece. I'm going to come in under the five minutes. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, do we have?
I have two people there that are perfect.
Okay, so, okay, so, who is up next, Mr. Slate?
Heidi Ross.
Heidi, please, you know, say your name and address for the record, please.
Test 12, test, test.
Yep, we hear you.
I am Heidi Ross. I live at 6 Deegan Lane.
Go ahead.
There are so many issues here, so, so very, very, very many. There are opinions. There are perspectives. There are questions, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There's a question of trust. I cannot urge this committee enough to vote no on passing this ordinance, 0720. I don't think you have the time to create the structure of process that Mr. Dingler so delicately brought to the forefront that would be needed for the fairness, that would be required for this committee to actually make it fair. I am being led by the words of a seasoned, experienced judge. And I don't think that there's time. Time is of the essence, and time and tide wait for no man. In terms of where I am, I align fully and thoroughly in all angles, regards, and extents with the seven property owners. No, that's not true. With the five property owners, five of them, who represent more than five votes that run along Crescent Drive. And I depart myself in mind and spirit from the two neighbors that run along. that run along Mini Canfield, and you'll, you know what I mean. I ask of this committee to answer me here and now directly whether or not another public hearing will be brought forward and available to every public member who has concerns and needs the time to digest the events of the evening. In the essence of fairness to all. And the answer is?
The answer is, we're answering the questions after the public commentary.
So, one last point I'd like to make, in the essence of fairness, then, is that I think it is unfair, in fact, if Mr. Phillips gets to summarize this meeting during this platform this evening. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Next?
Emily Vincent?
Emily Vincent.
Hi, Emily Vincent, 71 Canfield Road. I just wanted to come back and clear up some miscommunications that seemed to be presented earlier, mainly the comparison between the abbey as it used to be as an office space and the abbey as it would be under this new redevelopment plan with Restoration Hardware. So, myself and all of the other neighbors that predate the current owner of the abbey would all be happy to attest that when it was used as an office, it was rarely used after 6:00 PM and virtually vacant on the weekends. And I think it's important to note that this new redevelopment plan would totally flip that on its head, where its busiest times would now be from 6:00 PM up until 11:00 PM midnight and on the weekends. So, I think talking about this space as, oh, this is a commercial property, that's been a commercial property, there's no changes here, I think is, is quite misleading, a quite a misleading comparison to make. In addition to that, also, when this place was being used as an office, and the developer mentioned there are hundreds of cars going in and out, while that was the vast, vast majority happening before 6:00 PM, I'm also unaware of any times when all of those hundreds of people working in that office found that parking space there was limited in comparison, or in contrast, I should say, to this new plan where there's going to be parking throughout and then even an additional need for overflow, parking at separate, separate pieces of land across from the abbey. So, I just wanted to kind of state that, make that known, and then just thank the board again for their time and for standing up for people like me, homeowners in the area, that do have a voice in this, and that it is really important to us, not just in protecting our investment, which I understand the developer also wants to do that, but also in keeping this a community where we feel safe, where we feel comfortable, and where we feel that the board is looking out for our best interests as well. So, thank you.
Thank you, Emily. Anyone else on the Zoom? There's one. Heidi again. So, we've got Heidi, and we've got Mr. Kaputa.
Ms. Mayor, can we take a two-minute break, please?
Um, I think we only have two more people, so I, if we could, can we take a break after that, or do, if you really want, we can right now?
Your call.
I, I'd rather finish our public commentary, if we could.
Sure.
Okay, so, Mr. Kaputa?
Thank you. Okay, I, as I indicated earlier, I think that the format where you cannot speak directly to the professionals and get the answer back, just like Heidi was asking you and you can use all answers of the question, that's not really fair. That's not a fair exchange. You need to be able to ask, get a response, and maybe give another follow-up question. This way of doing it, and having Mr. Phillips answer all the questions at the end, i- it's just not a fair item. But anyway, that, just say that. Here is.
Remo, it's not too much of an imposition. Could you remove your mask? It's very hard to hear you.
Sorry. Okay.
Thank you.
Were you able to hear what I said, though, before? Okay, I was just looking into or taking exception to the format where you couldn't ask a question back and forth. There's a couple of questions I do have. You know, we talked about the parking across the street. I think that that is a situation that's so bizarre that I can't even imagine that anyone would even give it any kind of credence to have, you know, these valets running across the street, you know, 60 cars, it's 120 trips, and they're going to run, and they're going to wait for the light because it's a crosswalk. I don't think so. Somebody's going to get hurt. I wonder, I'd like to know whether the chief of police has chimed in on this. Has the chief of police been made aware of it? I just talked to two police officers outside. They didn't know that there was going to be valet parking across the street. I would like to know if the police, if the police chief knows, and whether, what his comment on this is. There are, the, as, again, Rich Keller says, you have the Madison, Madison Hotel, and you have the rods who have been there for 70 years. They have one entrance on 24, and that's good. Why do we have to have entrances on Canfield Road? I asked Mr. Phillips back when we were, back in March, when we were at before the planning board. I said, is it, is it consistent with the master plan to put commercial traffic on, on residential roads? And, you know, he didn't really give you, he goes, right turn only. Well, I don't believe in right turn only. I don't think that that happens. There's a, there's easily roads there with that stop sign, and people don't stop at that stop sign. So, there's going to be overflow. People are going to come out of, out of, out of this place, are going to go down Crescent, come down Canfield, go across whatever. So, there's going to be traffic, and some of these people will have their drinking at, at this place. The thing is about it, and some of the things that Restoration Hardware is saying they're going to do, they're wonderful, great, you can do all these things, but they're not, they're not in stone. They're not anywhere other than, yeah, we'll take care of that, we'll take care of something else. That's a wonderful thing. Let's have a meeting. Let's get it all in the redevelopment plan. The caveat that everyone has to understand, and this is the truth, that this plan can be altered later on, and there will be, look, I didn't, like I said, I've been doing this for 40 years. They will come in, and they will tell you, just like they're telling you now, if we don't do this, we have to tear down the abbey. Well, they'll, that, that story will come up again. You can write that down, put it on the wall, and when it happens, three, four, or five years from now, you can see that it was said first. So, that is, you know, I think inevitable. I just think that this thing needs to be looked on, looked at more carefully, and, and put together in a manner that is going to be able to, you know, have everything put in the plan so that when it's passed, at least there's some semblance. If, if preserving, if preserving the abbey is so important, why are we allowing, Mr. Phillips in his plant says they're tearing down a footprint, or they said a floor plate of 3,000 feet. I can't say for sure, but that's not 3,000 feet. I think that's 6,000 feet. I don't think it's three stories, or it may be 9,000 feet. So, that, that, that is misleading to somebody who looks at the plant and says, oh, they're taking out 3,000 feet. Well, and maybe it is 3,000 feet, but, because I haven't been able to look at it grid carefully, but it may very well be 6,000 feet. Now, is a question I want, I would like to ask Mr. Phillips. Is it 3,000, or is it 6,000? If you were going to preserve the abbey is the, is the key point of this thing, then why are we tearing down however many square feet of the abbey? Why are we decimating the parking lot, I mean, the, the grounds? That to me, if you're going to give these people something, well, they need to give us something. And I think grounds should be preserved to the greatest extent possible, and I don't think that that's the case. So, to go back to the basics, I would like to have those questions answered, and I would like to see this board, load on sending this, referring this back to the planning board, for your extensive evaluation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we've got Paul just came in and out. I don't know what, what, Paul, do you want to raise your hand again? Yes, Paul, unmute you.
This is Paul D'Antonio?
Yes, it's Paul D'Antonio.
Okay, so, this is Paul's second five-minute.
I just have a few questions about the buildings, the new construction buildings, relative to the existing structure and where the demolition is going to occur. Truthfully, I don't have an issue necessarily with the part that's being torn down. Most people don't know that exists in, in reality. The question I have for the planner, and perhaps he could comment, is why can't one of the new construction buildings, especially the one that on your grid looks furthest west, be moved in back of the existing structure, and then in turn align the two other buildings in front and back of one another as the other two are currently, thus relieving some of the footprint pressure on the Canfield roadside of the property, thus allowing parking in that particular area? There's a nice big open area in back of the building, and if it's, if it's my understanding, that building furthest west is not so high where it would dwarf the abbey in front of it. So, can you comment as to why the planners, and in conjunction and speaking with RH, they had to have all of these three buildings separate from the abbey and taken up all of the footprint that, that we see here? Again, the other, the other question that I do have, and I know someone on the committee voiced a concern where he was a little concerned that one of the buildings are going, going to be taller than the abbey. That may be true, but truly, if you're coming from Moorestown or Friendly's, the large trees that will remain, fortunately, in Crum and Forster, it actually blocks that until you almost get to the intersection. So, I, by the time you're going to see the abbey, the abbey's going to be really seen from the street, and unless you're right at that intersection anyway. So, while that's a valid concern, I, I don't know if that would make a big difference if it, if it's that one building structure is larger than the abbey. Yeah, the, the issue, again, is the scale and, and the guarantees, and unless there are guarantees, they are, RH has worked with people, as I shared. You should look in, you should Google the, what their discussions, and actually, the, the contracted or contractual obligations they made to Chicago and what they agreed to there. And in fact, it was passed with, within 30 days, they, the zoning was reclassified back to residential. And it's my understanding they did that. So, if RH ever moved out of it, guess what? It became a residential zone building again. So, these are things that I think have to be researched to protect everyone and, and, and give everyone that assurance, that, that warm and fuzzy feeling that people want. Right now, it, it's a promise, and something has to be done to be, to provide assurance to everyone that it is, that is scaled properly to the neighborhood. And look at the footprint. You could do something better there as far as get most of that building and alleviate the setback requirements that everyone is so concerned about. So, thanks again for the time.
Thank you. And we have Nick Rasioppi, who I believe has not gone twice yet. So, Nick?
Hello again, and, and thank you again for your efforts. I just wanted to respond to a couple of things. I think that this fear of shutdown is really, in the future, is some red herring. It's shut down now. We're in jeopardy of losing it now. The idea that an outfit, an organization like Restoration Hardware is going to invest millions upon millions of dollars and then come back because they think it's not going to work, and have leverage after they invested the million dollars, that's not how it works. And I don't want any more, we, we don't, we can't absorb any more delay. The Donaldins showed everybody how it's done. You meet with the developer, you get their agreement, and it is written in stone. We're not recreating the wheel here. The way it's written in stone is that it winds up in a redevelopment agreement. The redevelopment agreement is the stone. It's where the developer agrees to what he agreed to with the neighbors, and he must follow those. If he doesn't follow those, he doesn't get a CO. He's shut down. It happens in every development in New Jersey, any redevelopment in New Jersey. And I think you really have to distinguish between those neighbors, what real concerns, and they, there's many of them that have good, real concerns, and those who just want to kill the project by any means available. And that means by either delay or having so many conditions that it becomes an unfeasible project. Many residents have expressed sincere concerns, like the Donaldins, and restoration listed, responded to, they will be incorporated into the redevelopment agreement, which is the stone. But there are a few that I think are insincere and are using things to kill the project. I mean, look at their expert. Their expert is Mr. Stack. I don't think that was a sincere planning effort, in my opinion. He didn't discuss, like Mr. Phillips, the towns planner, he didn't discuss how this would affect the surrounding area. I thought he didn't discuss what an enhancement would be. He, he didn't discuss, in fact, he actually said the opposite. He said, is it so worth saving the abbey for this project? So, he doesn't care about our community. In fact, what he does, I know because I'm in the industry, is he is a professional objector. He doesn't represent municipal client. He has not prepared a redevelopment plan, and he is never a kind. You should ask him or whoever he represents. He said he was expressing the neighbor's concerns. I'm a neighbor. I'm 51 Canfield. He wasn't expressing my concerns. But someone should find that, I understand that he's never a kind, that an area in need of redevelopment designation was valid. That means he's only a kind that it's invalid. So, I want you to listen to those neighbors close by who have real concerns about walls and lights and setbacks, but I don't want you to listen to a professional objector who, who files a transparent, and to me, amateurish attempt, to kill a project that could not be more valuable for this township. This is the best project for the town. You cannot lose it and demolish the building. We cannot have another honeywell. This project is a great testament to the neighborhood, the community, the county, and the state. It is a once-in-a-lifetime golden opportunity, I think, for my community, and I urge you to approve the plan, and whatever reasonable conditions, reasonable condition to address the close neighbor's concerns can be built into the redevelopment agreement. That's how it's done in New Jersey. That is the stone. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've got Nina in on Zoom.
Okay. I know, I'm not sure if Mr. Manqueso can see our screen. We do have two more. If we get any more than that, we will take a break. How's that?
Thank you.
Nina?
Nina?
I believe we've heard, have we heard from Nina yet?
No, you have not.
Okay, Nina, please say your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Nina Caramalis. I live at 11 Bickford Drive in Morris Town, New Jersey, in Morris Township. And I am also one of the owners of British Home Emporium in Madison, New Jersey. So, once again, you know, we have great concerns, both for ourselves and for other business owners in the area. And I want to reemphasize how unusual it seems to be to be bringing a $2.5 billion in sales company, corporation, publicly traded corporation into Morris Township. This is unprecedented, and while the previous speaker has said it's a golden opportunity for the community, I think that this is a death knell to small business in the community because allowing chain stores like this, and this is a publicly traded chain store of over 150 stores at present, with enormous goal to expand, to dominate the home industry, to dominate the landscape industry, the interior design industry, and hospitality industry. So what this is going to do to small owners of restaurants, to small owners of businesses, both in Madison and in Morris Township and Morris Town, is really tremendous. And then, you know, although Restoration may be saying that they're going to do a redevelopment plan, legally, once you start opening this corridor of development to chain stores, and this is a chain store, it's a pretty chain store, but it is a chain store, legally, what is the opportunity, what, I mean, what is the, what stands in the way of other chain stores coming in and moving down 24 and encroaching further upon the residential areas? So I think, you know, that is a very important thing for everybody who is concerned about how this is going to affect the beautiful residential areas that border Restoration Hardware, the abbey presently. I mean, it is very important to preserve the abbey, but there have to be other ways to do it that are not going to threaten the entire community. And I see this as a very big threat to the businesses of this community as well as the residences of the community. And while it may be seductive to think of something like a prestigious Restoration Hardware coming into town, it is not going to benefit those homeowners who are in the area. It's not going to help them with their property values. It is only going to hurt because having that kind of commercial encroachment and the traffic issues and the further development of other retail businesses that now that a precedent is started, that others can come in and follow through. And before you know it, maybe you have Home Depot down the road.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Chains develop in malls and urban areas. Chains do not develop in small towns. That is not historically in the United States what has benefited the growth of small businesses in America. And to me, this is a highly unusual thing for a town like Morris Township, even Morris Town, to entertain. But for Morris Township to have a huge chain store coming in is threatening everybody, and they have allowed small businesses to grow in small towns. That is what small towns have been all about, is allowing small businesses to grow. Pardon me? Independently owned businesses. So this is a very big concern that we have for both ourselves and for many small businesses that are in the home industry, in the hospitality industry, and ultimately Restoration Hardware intends to dominate even the home development industry. So I don't know if anybody has read Gary Friedman's annual report and what their goals are, but their goal-
Nina, just so you know, you have 30 seconds left. I know you can't see the signs, so I'm sorry to interrupt.
I can't. So I would just say that many towns throughout New Jersey do not permit the intrusion of chain stores to infiltrate and ultimately dominate their retail environment, and we hope that the town administration will consider these factors and implications and prevent the sale of the historic abbey to Restoration Hardware. While the sale may appear an appealing opportunity to save the abbey, it is at a high cost to a large host of private businesses in the community and will have severely negative impact on many local residents. We hope you will consider these issues as you meet further on this and discuss this topic and consider it further.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
We appreciate your comments. Okay, I believe our final speaker this evening is Heidi Ross. And Heidi, if you, I think you should be unmuted, right?
Test one, two, test, test. I'm Heidi Ross at 6 Deegan Lane.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so in the essence of fairness, I'd like to ask whether you're going to have another planning board meeting, and if you can answer that right now. I mean, another public hearing, excuse me, I misspoke.
That's the-
No, we're moving on. Heidi, please move on. That question is in the list. Please move on.
Okay, that's an interesting point. So I think that the idea of a precedent being set should be seriously considered, not only in terms of what else will come down the road in terms of commercial development, while that's important, but also in terms of the impact to the neighbors in terms of the access to Canfield Road. Because I think that when that's allowed, that then Crum and Foster is likely to jump on and request that they can bump out there. And when they jump on, there will be a domino effect, and when the property on the corner of Old Glenn and Madison Avenue comes into play, which is currently vacant, that they will jump on to the precedent that there will be allowed exits of commercial properties onto residential roads. I think that's a really important thing for the committee to think about. I hope the committee, the township, the technical committee, the engineering staff, really think about where the appropriate venue is in terms of these issues like the rooftop thing, and whether or not they don't in fact tie, or how they can be untied and clarified as to whether the right arena for discussion is in fact the Board of Adjustment or the redevelopment plan. And I think that is part of the conundrum that the Township Committee has to discover for itself and its role as the representatives and the protectors of the residents. The fact that the redevelopment plan does not affect, in fact amend, the master plan does not afford the protection to the neighbors that is suggested, not only suggested actually, but defined in the goals and objectives of the master plan and is the very first thing listed in those goals. And so, you know, there are various veins of consideration that need to be taken into account. And once again, to the essence of when and where they happen, but maybe more importantly, how they happen and to what extent in terms of the quality of the time allotted to fully consider them. And then on top of all that, you know, the question of whether or not the abbey security and continuance in terms of a building standing will be in fact, and to the solidity, and in comparison to the solidity that the redevelopment plan, the MOA, the agreement, will solidify this arrangement, whether that same solidity exists for the protection of the abbey. And Carol Barkin, if you're out there, and to the point of the, on a technical point, about the calculations and some reference to the occupants of the building and the office staff in terms of its relationship to the parking count needed, has been omitted, omitted from the plan, from the redevelopment plan. And this, and I can't agree with Remo-
Just so you know, you've got 30 seconds left. I know you can't see the signs, and I apologize for-
Another point coming in terms of the fairness of this whole forum, okay, that is more than difficult. It is actually unfair. So to that end, I will say thank you. I encourage you, I implore you to hold another public hearing. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, you got, this is it. Mr. Maoli?
Thank you for hearing me again.
Wait, we need your name and address for the-
I'm Maoli, 85 Rock Civicus Road, Far Hills, New Jersey, and I am the owner of the abbey that is the property at subject of the hearing. First, I want to just clarify one issue and apologize to Mr. Brazel for calling it a comedy show, but what I really meant is, I mean, the board is a comedy show. The board is doing an amazing job fielding the questions of the neighbors and the people involved. The comedy show comes in is where the people at hand, some of the people that are objected to it, like Mr. Caputo, are saying they know nothing about this and they've never heard about it. He's still up here at least three to four times and talked about the entire project. He knows every aspect of it. In fact, even deeper than that, he went on site on a Saturday afternoon with four or five objectors, with planners and people who work for Restoration Hardware, to talk about what the issues that they had were, and Restoration Hardware was willing to work with them and work with every aspect of problems that they had with this project and to come up with a solution. So the comedy show is to stand here and say you know nothing about it? Is what you're doing is you're misleading the board, and you're testing the intelligence of, intelligence of the board. So alls I'm saying is that you need to peel back the onion. The Restoration Hardware was onsite on a Saturday afternoon and spent time with all of these people, heard their concerns, addressed their concerns. I believe there was a letter put forth to the town already addressing a lot of the people's concerns, and I think that they will continue to work with the people when it comes to a planning board hearing, but they want, you know, these people just want to push this thing and kick the can down the road and delay the project or derail it, and the reality of it is, is you have a user and you have a company who is willing to work with the people in the neighborhood to provide them the reassurances that they want and that they need. And I just want to say one more thing, and I'm done, you don't have to hold up the sign, is that at the end of the day, you know, you guys are unpaid officials who are voted in by the town. The integrity of you people who stand here night after night and listen to these people from the town and spend time and effort to address their concerns, it is insane. It's, I don't do it. You're doing it for nothing, and you're doing it for the better of the town. So alls I'm saying is I commend you, I apologize for the comment, but it really wasn't meant. The comment was meant towards the public and how we're misleading the board, because the reality of it is, is the time that Restoration Hardware spent with them in person and the amount of dollars and things that Restoration Hardware is willing to do to satisfy the neighbors and satisfy the public, I don't think you'll get elsewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, with that, I do see Heidi's hand up again. Heidi, I believe you've had three times. Three is our limit. We have Nina one more time.
Peter, there you go.
What, Peter, are you, we seem to keep getting one more, one more. I told Peter that, or Mr. Manqueso, that we would take a break, and we do have one more person.
Ms. Mayor, why don't we just take the break for five minutes and come back and hear the people who want to speak? It's only five minutes.
We will take a break. I'm looking at our clock here. We'll take a break until 8:55.
Okay.
Would you rather have 10? That's good. Okay, 8:55, we will resume. We will have a break until then. We have one minute.
I can't, you all choose it to one minute.
Okay, we're going to resume our public comment. I see one hand. Nina? Nina, if you could say your name and your address again for the record.
Hi, this is actually her husband, George. She has given her five minutes to me. So I'm George Caramalis, 11 Bickford Drive in Morris Township, and also the co-owner with British Home Emporium in Madison, New Jersey. I just wanted to make a couple of points. The first one is, while I respect Mr. Maoli for trying to, you know, be on the cusp of selling his building, his impassioned presentations to the board would probably take place no matter who was proposing to take over the abbey. So I just want you to take into consideration, he has very much of a vested interest in this whole process. And the second point I would like to make is, I think I made this point when I presented to the committee a couple of weeks ago, but I just want to emphasize that stores like Restoration Hardware have developed in malls and in major urban centers. So to compare the renovation and restoration of the abbey to centers in New York City, Chicago, Los Angeles, San Francisco, and other major urban areas that are filled with million-square-foot department stores and mega-stores is not a good comparison. While I respect very much the efforts of the Morris Town and County historical societies in wanting to restore the abbey to its glory, to compare what Restoration is going to try to do in Morris Township to their other projects that have been in these major cities isn't a valid comparison. In those major cities, there are many, many, you know, huge stores that, where the urban centers are used to having them, and the population is there to support them. This is a very different project, and it seems to me a precedent-setting project where, since the malls and the cities are under siege due to coronavirus, Restoration Hardware is trying to make inroads into suburban areas. And I think in my last presentation, I mentioned that because these majors chains have been, have developed in the malls and in urban centers, it has enabled independent small business owners to develop in the cities, in the small towns and cities, not only in New Jersey, throughout New Jersey though, but throughout the United States. So to set the precedent that now these big guys can come in definitely threatens the small businesses that are currently thriving throughout these communities. The last point I would like to make is, excuse me, is since Restoration has been meeting with the residents, I'm wondering if I can get some contact information to try to meet with the folks from RH, to meet with local businesses, to hear our concerns, and hear maybe they have some solutions for our concerns as well as for the neighbors and residents around the abbey. So if you all have some contact information to the folks at RH, I would love to get that and reach out to them. That's all I have. So thank you for your time, and I hope you consider all these things when you go to the decision-making step. Thank you.
We will. Thank you. Okay, I see one more person, Anne Hoskia. Anne, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
I just wanted to follow up regarding the setbacks. I had sent the Township Committee a letter on Monday night, and in it, I, well, I'll read part of it. For the record, we did, some of the neighbors, there was a handful of us, met with Phil Abramson and Frank Vitola on June 20th in the abbey. In attendance were myself, Remo Caputo, Judge John Harper, Jim Dingler, and Lori and Frank Donlin. The meeting lasted about an hour. The site plan was enlarged for easy viewing, and in the middle of the table- The meeting lasted about an hour. The site plan was enlarged for easy viewing and in the middle of the table were copies of documents for us to go over. Phil Abramson was very pleasant and very nice, took notes on our concerns and our issues. He said he'd put together a list of what was discussed and bring it to his client for consideration and get back to us. We received a letter of thanks acknowledging our meeting, but we did not hear back from Mr. Abramson or Mr. Vitola after that due to the fact, according to Mr. Vitola, that we sent out a petition. And Mr. Abramson confirmed that last week when I spoke to him. I will tell you that during that meeting, when they pointed everything out, Mr. Vitola looked at myself and Jim Dingler and said, "The plans have been reduced twice and will not be reduced any further, and we would not like the alternative." So again, I'm asking about the setbacks. That is our one main, main concern. There are others, but that is the main concern. Now, that's not a modification that can be made, is my understanding. And I know Mr. Phillips is going to address that. But if that can't be made, then I, along with everyone else that has voiced a concern about the setbacks, this needs to be rethought or approach Restoration Hardware again and ask them. We're not speaking for all the neighbors. Maybe the signature on our email should have been said, "A few neighbors of the abbey." But the tone has taken that we're the bad guys. We're not. We don't want to see the abbey removed. We don't want to see it demolished. But this was what was said to us at that meeting. So they never got back to the five or six of us. They did follow up with Donlin's, which we were not aware of until tonight. So no one stopped anybody else from speaking to Restoration Hardware. And it didn't stop the Restoration Hardware people from knocking on the bordering homes either. So we'd like to see it move forward. We think it would be a nice plan. But as voiced by many others, in the size plan that it is right now, it's too large. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That is it? Okay, Heidi, we see your hand, but you had three times. It's our limit. So I'm sorry, but
That's enough.
Yeah, that's, your three is on limit.
Mayor, seeing that we have no other people in the public to speak, may I move that we close the public portion of this hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so I will officially move to the closed public hearing, the public portion of the hearing for those seven. What, do we have one more?
No.
No? Okay, so I move that we officially close the public hearing, the commentary portion of this public hearing for, for that's those seven.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so the public comment portion of this meeting is now closed. And next up on our agenda for tonight is to hear from our presenters from RH. And again, you
I'm back up, Mayor.
There you are.
Hello.
If you could introduce yourself and your partner, Mr. Stanchak from RH, and your partner, whose name I don't have.
Elise Wallace. And Elise works with me at RH. She'll be running the presentation this evening. And as I thought about it, this, you know, we're gonna have a little logistics here because I actually can't see the presentation. And I'm wondering, Jim, as the presentation is up on the screen, can it be made available to my screen so I can follow along with it?
To share the screen, you should, you know, you will see it as well.
Okay, so if you would hit share a screen, that would be great. And then I can go through the presentation. And Elise will toggle us through as we go. That's terrific. I got it. Very good. Elise, you're you're running, it looks like. Okay, Jim, I have you. I don't have the presentation.
Okay, she's setting up the slideshow.
Okay, terrific. Thanks, Elise. Thank you, Jim. Yes, I can. Thank you. Thank you, Elise. Thank you, Mayor Wilson and Township Committee members. My name's David Stanchak. I'm the president, chief real estate and development officer for RH Restoration Hardware. This evening, what I'd like to do is go through a bit about our company. So folks can really get a grounding in who we are, our vision, our values, belief and culture. Talk about our strategy and why we're doing what we're doing in saving these landmarks and historical structures. Give some examples of RH galleries that we've done. Just touch briefly on RH International. And then go into some of our vision for the Onwick Hall. Our vision, we're, the vision of RH, next. We study some of the greats and we study quotes and metaphors. Helen Keller is particularly important as we think about who we are. And she said, "The only thing worse than being blind is not having sight, is having sight but no vision." We are a vision-led company and it takes great vision to imagine what the next iteration will be of some of these wonderful landmarks that we take on. Next. Our vision as a company is to create an endless reflection of hope, of inspiration and love that will ignite the human spirit and change the world. By chasing our hopes and dreams, we inspire others to chase theirs. By fearlessly fighting for what we believe in, we encourage others to do the same. By shining our light, expressing the very best of ourselves, who create a reflection that cannot, that can be endless and elevate humanity. And just as a pause, this does not sound one like a company or a large corporation. This is, you know, truly from our hearts. This is what we believe in. You have to have this kind of a vision in order to see through some of these very difficult projects that we do. But we know as our brand, it makes us better. So we're very vision-led and we have a great vision, I believe, for the abbey. This is not a business that sells furniture. For us, it's a platform to change the world. Our values and beliefs. They guide our behavior and act as a foundation for all of our decisions. We love this Calvin Coolidge saying, and I think it really does take this level of perseverance. Nothing in the world can take the place of persistence. Talent will not. Nothing in the world is more common than unsuccessful men or women with talent. Genius will not. Unrewarded genius is almost a proverb. Education will not. The world is full of educated idiots. Persistence and determination are omnipotent. The slogan, "Press on," has solved and always will solve the problems of the human race. Calvin inspires us to innovate and we value innovation, taking risks and going boldly where no company has gone before. Clearly, no one is building the kinds of beautiful galleries and integrated spaces that we have built across the country. We believe you're either striving to get better or allowing yourself to get worse. There's no such thing as staying the same. The power of innovation comes from leveraging the creative minds and spirit of all of our people at all levels of the organization. We strive to build an environment that encourages people to challenge. Ask why, ask why not. We embrace those people who have the courage to put forth new ideas and breathe new life into our company. Innovation is at the core of what we do. Vision is everything. We believe vision leads the leader. It ignites and fuels the human, the fire within. Vision is about destroying today's reality to create tomorrow's future. Leaders without a vision are managers, arranging and organizing the status quo. Our culture. This is not our company, it's our cause. It's an authentic expression of who we are and what we believe in. We're not about replication or duplication. We're about creating new, wonderful experiences for people, for them to be able to experience our brand, both in our beautiful art, I'd say almost art gallery settings, in our restaurants, in our wine vaults, at our baristas. We believe that it's an authentic expression of what we believe in. It's not about profits, it's about purpose. We know that profits will follow purpose. It's not about best practices, it's about next practices. Best practices are for followers. Next practices are developed by leaders. It's not about who's right, it's about what's right. And I think the process that we've been through together, both at the TCC and now the public hearings, it's not about, you know, who's right in each one of these instances. We'll figure out what's right. And none of us are smarter than all of us. We need to get all the brains in the game and egos out of the room. Leadership is about being a visionary versus being a victim. We allocate human and financial capital based on the emotional, strategic and financial value of a particular idea, in that order. Emotional value. How much do we care? How deeply do we believe? And how far are we willing to go to ensure success? When I saw the abbey for the first time, and it was during Mansions of May, I was really inspired by the artisans and local designers, people that came. We were one of the attendees. I didn't know Tom Maoli and I really didn't know much about the abbey. But I was really inspired and emotionally moved to try to save this beautiful landmark. Strategic value is what we think of next. How will this differentiate and define us, separate us from others and render our brand more valuable? And lastly, it's the financial value. How much is it worth to the top and bottom line? What is the return on investment? Does it have asymmetrical risk to the upside? Now, we have done about twenty-four of these new design galleries. We fully understand the economics of these, what's necessary to make them successful. We have a superior model that I'll explain about our furniture business, our restaurant and wine and our baristas. But we understand that. And we have been operating in this market since nineteen ninety-eight. And employed people, designers, and have been very successful. We have been over at the Short Hills Mall, but as we've done across the country, we've moved out of storefronts in malls or storefronts on main streets, and we've created these beautiful estates or compounds. View of the industry and our strategy to disrupt it. We love P.T. Barnum. I love the movie recently that was made about his life. But he said, "No one ever made a difference being like everyone else." Retailers have spent the past twenty years becoming more rather than less like everybody else. The herd mentality. We clearly do not follow the herd mentality. We're going in a different direction. We are blazing our own path. And frankly, most people cannot really understand us and really would not want to follow that path. They would feel more comfortable going with the herd mentality, being in malls, doing things like everybody else does. The age of Amazon and death of department stores. We think Amazon is actually falsely accused of the death of retail. We think that it's dying from old age and lack of innovation. We like Charles Darwin and what he says, "It's not the strongest of the species that survives, nor the most intelligent. It's the one most adaptable to change." There are those with taste and scale and those with scale and no taste. We believe the idea of scaling taste is large and far-reaching. And thus, we've built the platform on which we've been growing. The platform is a beautiful design gallery that showcases product, that does not have signs and windows, that allows people to browse and be a part of our experience and to imagine what their home or second home or vacation home could be like. And that is what we view as scale and taste. Steve Jobs said it well, "Ultimately, it all comes down to taste." And that was answer to a question of what his success is. And Steve Jobs, we admire and study. He's at the crossroads of technology and design, the beauty and simplicity of iPhones and how intuitive they are. Little concerned how much they dominate our lives, but frankly, could we imagine our lives without them? It's not about physical versus digital, it's about physical with digital. It's about the seamless integration of a brand across all channels. And that's how we operate. We meet customers where they are. We believe the physical manifestation of a brand will prove to be more rather than less important. And thus, we are building these beautiful design galleries, especially for brands that aren't selling commodities. You can understand toilet paper and tissue and toothpaste should and could be bought over the internet very easily. But for what we do, we believe that physical manifestation is the most capital-efficient way to scale in the physical world. We live in a world of complexity and clutter, bombarded with information and choices. And therefore, time is our most important asset. Next. So time is the ultimate luxury. Businesses or brands that don't deliver time value become less valuable. And for us, what we provide for people is a wonderful experience for them to be able to shop, dream. And we provide the opportunity to design with us the home of their dreams and the spaces of their dreams. Excellent. Great brands don't chase customers. Customers chase great brands. Great brands are vision, not customer-led. The iPhone, Tesla, Instagram or Disneyland did not come from a focus group. We love this quote from Henry Ford, "If I asked my customers what they wanted, they would have told me a faster horse." Our strategy, and it's been said this evening, you know, our strategy is to disrupt and dominate the luxury home furnishings market. Why? Because we see the opportunity in the opaqueness of the current process of buying furniture. You don't know exactly what the prices are when you go into a designer showroom. You don't exactly know what they make. We've taken all of that out of the equation. We've been very transparent. Customers appreciate it. And we are successful. We make, you know, no bones about it. We believe that we are satisfying what customers want. And that's why we've been successful. Our journey begins with this question. Who is the home brand for the luxury customer? Those who shop at Neiman's or North Shore or Bart's or Bergdorff or Tiffany or LVMH, we believe this question frames our opportunity. And this is one of the first manifestations of our vision. RH created the most comprehensive collection of luxury home furnishings presented in the most inspiring spaces in the world. This is RH Boston. And this property had been abandoned for a while. And it's one of the most beautiful properties in the Back Bay. It was built in eighteen sixty-three. We rescued it and created an amazing property for people to be able to, and the entire public to be able to view. What did we start as? We started as a small business of nostalgic discovery items with only a twenty-million-dollar market cap and an eighty-four-page catalog with an Aqua Troll on the cover. And an Aqua Troll, for those of you don't know, if you never were part of, you know, one of our customers back then, it was a watering device for your front lawn. What have we become? We've been transformed into a three-billion-dollar luxury design platform with a six-and-a-half-billion-dollar market cap. We didn't get there overnight. It's been twenty-long years of Gary Friedman's work on RH. Frankly, it would have been a lot easier just to start a new brand and transform it, but this is what we've become. You know, with interior books and rugs and beach house and outdoor and baby, child, teen and ski house and modern and RH team. We have three thousand pages of inspired designs. This allows people to, really, these are source books for not only the design community, but also our customers. Furniture of this quality has never been made in these quantities. We're built, this is the first that's ever been done like what we're doing. We're trailblazing. Next. We've built a powerful product platform that attracts and amplifies the best design and manufacturing talent in the world. Our idea came from the iPhone and Steve Jobs' idea of the Apple products being a platform for the greatest developers in the world. And all the great tech developers develop for iPhone and their systems. We thought of the same thing. Our design galleries attract the very best designers in the world who want to scale the beauty that they have and have created. And right now, you know, when they're working with clients one at a time, they have a very difficult time scaling. We are building an interior design business that moves the brand beyond creating and selling products to conceptualizing and selling spaces. And we're quickly becoming a leading luxury interior design firm in the country. It's not about the internet. You know, pre-COVID, only twelve percent of retail sales were done online. It's about the lack of imagination of retail. It's about the lack of imagination of retail. This happens to be the Sax, used to be the Saxwith Avenue store at the Cherry Creek area of Denver. It's just an archaic windowless box. Those, you know, no sense of humanity, no natural air or fresh, no light or fresh air. And we say that, you know, plants die in places like this. What did we create? This is what we created in its place. We created the RH gallery at Denver, the gallery at Cherry Creek. It's inspiring. It blurs the lines between residential and retail. It's more home than store. It's flooded with natural light, fresh air and garden courtyards and rooftop parks. This is RH Los Angeles. This is actually something we built. And if you'll notice, there's no windows. It pours right out onto the street. We, for the community, we actually on the rooftop built a park that the community enjoys. And in the middle over the RH sign is the winged goddess Nikkei. And we like to say this angel presides over the city of angels. This is what we built in West Palm Beach. And those of you from New York who travel down to Florida, we built a beautiful 80,000 square foot compound with a rooftop restaurant, wine vault and our barista. And in addition to this, we really built a walled compound that protects us from, you know, traffic and everything that's on the outside. It's a very busy street. And it's a very nice respite for other folks of Palm Beach and West Palm Beach to come and experience our gallery. This is the rooftop cafe, the first one we built. You can see this will form some of the vision that we have for the Abbey. The restaurant that we have will have water, will have a fountain, will have indoor trees and a beautiful chandelier. It will be, as you can see, a relaxed atmosphere. We have not crammed in seats here. This is, and I will explain that we operate the restaurant as an integrated experience to the RH gallery, that it's meant for our customers, customers that want to experience and be a part of RH. And frankly, where we make, you know, our money is in selling furniture, not in restaurants. This is an amenity and is an experience, a deeper experience for our customers. And this is a beautiful atmosphere in which for them to dine, take a break from the design process and still be with us for the day. This is the wine vault. We do not have a bar in any of our galleries. We do not serve hard alcohol. We only sell wine and we specialize in vintage wines and from specialized wines from the Napa Valley. But this looks like it's been there forever. This was built in a motif of Florida and really the Spanish influence. It looks like it's been there forever, but actually this is a new build. This is, and I really want to zero in on this one and spend a little bit of time here. This is in the Napa Valley, Yountville. It's the gallery in Napa Valley. It's the first of its kind. It's something that we built. It's a celebration of food, wine, art and design. And it's in the heart of the Napa Valley. It's this elegant wine country compound of five contemporary, yet classically inspired structures. What I'd like to bring to everyone's attention is the building to the left, which is a historic structure. I'll speak to it in a minute. Just to the left of it, which is actually the south, that is a residential home right next to us. To the top of the page, that these are condominiums that are there. We worked in conjunction and closely with our neighbors to create something that is a beautiful expression of our age that's an amenity to the community. I mean, frankly, the people that live around us and there's residences across the street, they, you know, come to us in the evenings, have glass of wine. They've been great customers of ours and whether it's the food or the gallery. And we created this beautiful indoor and outdoor compound in the Napa Valley. And it's just an amazing structure. Next. This is kind of zeros in on the restaurant that we built with a glass rooftop. This is intended to engage the global luxury clientele who visit vacation in Napa Valley. Behind Disney World, number two for people who visit California, they go to the Napa Valley to enjoy wonderful wines and the, just the wonderful experience of being in the valley and in the mountains. Next. This is 104, was built in 1904. It's amazing rebuilding. It's one of the first buildings that was built in the Napa Valley. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. And we were entrusted with this gem to reimagine it and take it and make it relevant for the next 100 years. This is the interior that we reimagine. This is what we call the wine vault. It's defined by these beautiful field stone walls and 24 foot cedar plank ceiling. We have a limestone wine tasting table that we use. The chandeliers, it just acts absolutely romantic, beautiful place to stay and enjoy our age and enjoy our expression of what our lifestyle is. This again will be inspiration for what we'll do as part of the Onmecall Abbey redevelopment. This is a beautiful outdoor courtyard. This is where we display outdoor furniture. And I would also call to your attention, the wall immediately to the left where the chandelier is, that is the wall that separates us to the neighbors. And in conjunction with the neighbors, we, you know, created white noise and sound like there is a trick, there are trickling fountains you can see in the foreground. Beautiful trees and shrubs and specimen plants that we've used. We use decomposed granite and blue stone pathways. It's absolutely a beautiful place to be and is really an amenity to the community. This is another shot and it will inspire us for the Abbey. You can see not only our bordering wall, but you can see that we built, we planted these beautiful olive trees. They're actually over 100 years old. We've cared for them so carefully. And they frame just a beautiful expression of who we are. Light and air and people just love being outside here. This again is an inspiration for what we will do at Onmecall and the Abbey. The outdoor area is flanked on either side by this, these beautiful Isakern fireplaces. They, they are not wood burning, but you would think they are. And they're at night, it's just a wonderful place to be. And people stroll through here with a glass of wine. They don't dine outdoors here, but they stroll through with a glass of wine. They walk through the compound. It's just a beautiful place to be. And frankly, when they, the community asks us to open the gates early in the morning, they like to stroll through there before we open, drink their coffee, walk their dogs. It's quite a nice environment. And then lastly, this is again will inspire the inside of the Abbey, what I'll call the colonnade between the historic structure and our new structure. When you walk in, you'll see trees. You'll see beautiful fountains and chandeliers. And it'll be under a glass roof. It will feel both indoors and outdoors. But actually, this is indoors. I, you wouldn't know that. It looks like you are dining outside, but it's inside. And in the background is the historic masonry building that I spoke of earlier. Historic preservation and adaptive reuses, reuses. And what we, what we say is this, we either find great architecture, preserve it and adapt it, or we create great architecture. And I've given you examples of where we've created great architecture, like in Denver or LA. Or here, we've been entrusted with Greenwich, Connecticut's gem, the US Post Office. It was originally built in 1915. We, you know, went through the same collaborative process, same redevelopment process. And we worked with the community. I think what has come out is award winning. And we've been blessed with it. It's on the National Register of Historic Places. We worked with our architects, Backham and Gillam, who, you know, have a worldwide practice, but primarily are in California. But they came up with what we thought was amazing. And we rethought this, you know, most post offices were just little lobbies and all distribution behind it. We totally reimagined the inside of it. And next you'll see what it, what it, what it looked like. Literally, the only thing left standing were the walls. And we totally had to rebuild the building to make sure that it stood. We kept, you know, and working with structural engineers, working with architects. We came up with a way to save this building and we believe it's well worth saving. The Greenwich community appreciates it. And I think, you know, Morris Township is in the same vein as a Greenwich, you know, Ridgewood, New Jersey, Birmingham, Michigan. These are all wonderful towns with rich heritages. And we've been entrusted with some of the best buildings, I think, in America. They're hard to find, but we find them and they work. It's well worth preserving and the investment. Next. Chicago, which a few people spoke to. This building sat vacant for 25 years. It was in disrepair. It's in the Gold Coast of Chicago, a residential area. It was built in 1915 for women to study music, painting, drama, the other arts. And we reimagined it as a beautiful experience that activates all the senses. This is what was the open air courtyard, which I'll show you in the next picture, was decrepit and overrun. The vision we had for it, when Gary Friedman, our chairman, saw it, he said, we have to save this place. It reminds me of the Hotel Coast in Paris on Saint Honoré, which that beautiful hotel for anyone who's been there, and I've been privileged to be there and go, is a place with a beautiful open air courtyard and just activated with energy. And you can see this is not a crowded restaurant. We have couch seating. We have a fountain. We have indoor trees. And one thing was brought up before about, you know, are we going to have special events and weddings? We've never had a wedding or a special event at any of our galleries. But at this gallery, which opened in October of 2015, we've had over 100 marriage proposals. It's romantic. We sell champagne here. People come to enjoy. And it's a place they come back to often because it now has a special place in their heart. Some of their grandmothers and aunts and such actually studied here or lived here. And we brought it back to them. We've gotten many thanks from folks about it. Okay. And then this is what it looked like before. This is New York. Many of you are familiar with it. I'm going to pick up our pace here a little bit. I know that, you know, it's getting late. I'm obviously very passionate about what we do. This is a beautiful historic adaptive reuse. We worked with the LPC, the Landmarks Preservation Council, all the local authorities. We worked in collaboration with them to create and preserve this beautiful structure and also bring it and make it relative for the next 100 years. Next. This is the indoor. When you walk in, you see this beautiful six story structure that goes all the way to the roof and a glass elevator. It's absolutely amazing. Next. This is our rooftop restaurant. Again, will inspire what we'll do. The, has inspired us to do more with this indoor trees and seating. Next. Quick on our menu. I'm going to skip this real quickly, just show you the pictures. We are really an upscale restaurant, burrata, shaved vegetable salads. We also serve, our number one seller is our burger. That's a one best burger in America, two years running, lobster roll. We have, you know, wonderful salmons and steaks. And then also we have fresh cookies and coffees from our barista bar. This is the rooftop overlooks the Hudson. It has beautiful views of downtown. It's an amazing place to be. This is what it looked like before. Literally, the only thing standing were the brick walls. We kept everything in place and then built around it and saved the historic structure. International, real quick, I'll just say this. We are doing things that are amazing. This is a 17th century country estate that Heritage England has entrusted us to renovate and create a gallery on 73 acres. It's a gem in the English countryside. We're inspired by the circular driveway that we would use at the Onmecall. Next. Next. Another shot of it. It's beautiful. Interior, this is a beautiful staircase that was done by Sir John Stone, a famous architect. We're keeping it intact. It's quite beautiful. Next. Our vision for Morris Township is to create an architectural inspiring estate that blurs lines between residential, retail, indoors and outdoors and home and hospitality, one that activates all the senses and attracts luxury customers to our home furnishing and design gallery. This, for those of you, we did a lot of research. Onmecall is actually inspired by the 11th century Alderwick Castle in Scotland. And of important note on the next slide, it actually served as the stand in for the exterior and interior shots from the Harry Potter films. And it was called Hogwarts in the Harry Potter film. We can't let this one go. It's, it's just too incredible. You can see the inspiration and how Onmecall got its roots. This is the gardens, beautiful hedges and trickling fountains. The same thing that we would want to do and be inspired by this. I think all of you, we've talked about this at Onmecall. The Meanies, I think, would be proud of what we have a vision for. They were entertainers. They opened their home up, you know, to people in the Gilded Age, you know, 100 plus estates out there. This is one of the only ones left. We have a great opportunity to save it. Of course, you know, the exterior. But one thing I would point out in the next slide, in addition to its being Morris County Heritage Commission recognized. Next. Next. It needs work. The exterior will need extensive work. The interior and portions of it, some are beyond saving and others, we will do everything possible in working with Historic Commission to save the, the history of the, of the Abbey. We'll keep going. We've reviewed this and Mr. Phillips has done a fabulous job of it. Our inspiration is from the Abbey. Next slide. And this is the colonnade I spoke to. And behind it will be our beautiful exterior gardens. Next. Let's move past. And then I want to just hit on a couple of the questions. We've heard a number of questions. We will memorialize all of our operations in our development agreement and work extensively, as we have, with the professionals at the city as well as the planning board. Next. We are a showroom. We're not retail. The furniture collections are displayed. All the purchases are made at the gallery. They're delivered to customers from offsite distribution centers. RH Hospitality, it's owned and operated by us. The reason it's successful, because it's part of a larger enterprise. It is not meant to be a standalone facility. It's not meant to be a special events menu. It is there solely to support our furniture sales and everything we do with our designs. Next. Our kitchen operations will meet or exceed every health code standard. All the waste will be stored indoors, refrigerated. And, you know, it will avoid odors and pest issues. We have exhaust state of the industry, state of the art exhaust fans. They utilize scrubbers and they meet or exceed industry standards. When you stand outside of one of these scrubbers, you can't smell this. It's fresh air. Deliveries, we'll do everything. First of all, we don't deliver furniture there. Only if we're changing out a floor display. And secondly, all the restaurant deliveries will be coordinated during morning hours. Operating hours will be open. The gallery will be open from 10 AM to 10 PM. The restaurant will be open daily at 11. Last seating would be no later than 10 PM, depending on which day. And then when you, we'd like to say, when you step back and consider what we're building is a brand with no peer. Two, we're creating a customer experience that can't be replicated online and will ensure our success for the foreseeable future. And we have total control of our brand from concept to customer. You realize what we're building is very rare and we would argue also proved to be very valuable, you know, to the community and to our customers. I'll answer questions as necessary, but thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stan. I have to say, you must have changed your presentation a bit. I didn't realize you were going to talk so extensively about your vision and values of the company. And I did appreciate that. And I look forward to reviewing the video so I can catch the. And I did appreciate that and I look forward to reviewing the videos so I can catch those a little more closely. That was interesting. I had questions about the site. What I would like to ask, if you're able to stay and listen to Mr. Phillips' answers to some of the questions and perhaps chime in after that. I want to have Mr. Phillips answer some of the site questions first. But what the questions I'd like to ask you about is we've had a few people talk about their experience with working with RH and the neighbors. And if you could just elaborate on that a little bit, how that works. And someone wanted contact information and it just, it sounds to me like you're very willing to work with people in the community, in the neighbors especially and
Of course, of course.
Elaborate a little bit more about.
Well, first of all, I'm going to, let me give everyone my email address. It's really simple. D S at R H dot com. Secondly, my cell phone number is four one five nine three six nine six four two. I, we are really an open book. We, we know that collaboration can be, can be messy. And it doesn't always go in straight lines. But we know we get all the brains in the game and we talk to people and we understand their concerns. We've solved many of these problems in all the developments. You can't do what we do without having an open mind and without being collaborative. So I would tell you that we have, the folks that I've used locally, and by the way, I grew up in New Jersey and attended college and law school in New York. I have a very soft spot for this area. And we've hired local people that will be working with us. Phil Abramson from Topology is also, you know, a planner, as well as Frank Vitolo have been working with us. We're working also with an excellent, excellent architect, Sawyer Berson, who've done some incredible projects and we like them a lot. They're local to the New York metropolitan area and New Jersey area. We'll be working closely with them. We find that that group, along with Gary Friedman, who's really our chief designer and architect. He loves taking these buildings and working with them. We'll meet with people. We already have met. The Donlands have been really excellent to work with. And we'll continue, you know, in that vein as we go through the remainder of the process, through the development agreement and also through the site planning process. We're very transparent. We'll have open meetings where we'll be able to work with people and make our resources available to solve problems.
Thank you. Also, just a couple of points. You talked about the fact that there, you know, there's no weddings there. You have no plans to do that.
Yes. Yes, I will speak to that. We've had so many, you know, requests. I mean, not just weddings, bar mitzvahs, bat mitzvahs, anniversaries, anything you can think of, we've been asked to do. I mean, it's, you know, people have asked us to open it up for, you know, fundraisers and charities and stuff like that. And while they're all worthwhile, it's not for us. It's not what we do. This is an amenity to our furniture business. We know that if we were to do those sorts of things, it wouldn't, it wouldn't work. Frankly, we don't want huge crowds on top of our beautiful furniture. And it's all about really creating a beautiful environment for people to shop and to dream. So special events, they're for other people to do. That's not our business. We're not in the business of doing that.
Thank you. Also, you said, you were here and you heard the concerns expressed by our residents. And many, many people are concerned with the density of the site. And some of the pictures you showed, it appeared to me that the residents, the neighboring residents were very close. So you must have experienced working with people who have concerns about density and setbacks. And if you could talk about that a little bit, please.
Sure. I mean, I think every situation is unique. The Napa Valley one that I highlighted is in an area, you know, of residential and with interspersed, not very much commercial. And frankly, we're one of the only, you know, I would say, commercial areas in that area they call no yo, North Yountville. There is a hotel in the area as well and actually two hotels in the area. But for the most part, these are strolling residential streets. Thomas Keller's, famous French laundry. If any of you have eaten there, it's probably, you know, Thomas is one of the most famous chefs in America, his French laundry, people come from all over the world to go there. We is literally, you know, just down the street from us. And so, you know, we fit into the Napa Valley community. There are no, you know, we don't view ourselves as being anything different than, than someone who wants to be in that kind of a beautiful community. We're not bringing one look. None of our galleries, some of our galleries look similar. But Napa Valley is, we've never done anything like it. And Alderweireld Hall, we've never done anything like it either. We think that that's really important to do bespoke work like that. That's what you're recognized for. And giving gifts back to the community, saving the masonry, which is that beautiful wine vault that we did in Napa Valley. That was a gift back to the community and it was really appreciated. And we think this is a great gift back to the Morris Township and greater area that people will appreciate and will create value and equity in what we do. That's a bigger mission than retailers have, but we think that that's part of what makes us so different.
Thank you. Anyone else on the township? Mark?
Oh, awesome.
Mr. Jarkey?
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Stan, for your presentation. I have one question. I'm curious what your locations are doing currently due to COVID restrictions to indoor dining, things like that. Are your locations just proceeding as just focusing on the store and furniture? Or have you moved some of your operations outdoors for outdoor dining?
Sure. Well, let's tell you that, you know, we closed our galleries and restaurants March 17. And, you know, frankly, the first few weeks of the situation was very bleak. I think our sales were down 43% across the, across the board. And something happened along the way that we found out like the most important store that we had was our web. And that people were reinvesting in their homes. You know, I've been sequestered here in the Pennsylvania mountains since Memorial Day. And I know what my wife is doing. We're buying furniture. We're doing projects. And, you know, frankly, COVID has been a reawakening of people into their homes or their second homes. The Hamptons, for instance, is people are out there and they're buying a lot of furniture. And, you know, we weren't open, but gosh, they were shopping on the web and we were delivering. As we were able to open restaurants, they basically were opening, you know, with 25 or 50% capacity indoors, depending on what locale you were in. Some places like New York City, we were prohibited from operating indoors at all. And in that special instance, both the liquor board and the local officials asked all of the restaurants, because restaurants were really hurting in the area. People are just depending on food sales. They opened the streets. They allowed people to serve people outside. In our instance, they, even though we hadn't before, we served food on our rooftop. And that's only for a temporary time. And then once, you know, things return to normal, we won't be serving outside anymore. We'll move back inside. But that's, you know, that's how we adjusted for COVID and it worked pretty well for us.
Thank you. Appreciate that. I think you had one question. I answered a question down there. We'll all be going into diagrams of what the proposed landscape would be or that.
That is a question for Mr. Phillips. We did have questions about the office. Do you want to cover that, Mr. Phillips, or? Let's finish this. Okay. Mr. Eric, Mr. Mike, you have a question?
Thank you. David, Peter Banget, how are you, sir?
I'm well.
A great presentation. I have two questions. What did you hear expounded tonight by the residents who didn't seem to be 100% for it? What, in your, in your thought process, what did you hear them saying?
Well, you know, I think there's a couple, you know, points I think are important. And I think the folks along Crescent Drive, just understanding how we can both address a buffer and which I'll kind of call quantity and then quality of how we would separate our use from their residential use. I mean, I think that's a very important issue that we need to, to address. And the Donlands, we have addressed with them and we have, you know, arrived at, I think, what would be an acceptable solution for them. We own the property next door. So the other property that abuts, the rear side, I guess the west side, if I'm not mistaken, of this property, we own. And we're going to, you know, do a beautiful job with it, just like we do with the Donlands. We can work through, I believe, on the south part with Crescent, how we can address them. Look, I mean, I think everything associated that I, that I heard is very, very solvable. And we've solved these problems before. Lighting with photometric studies. I mean, frankly, we have no light-up sky ordinances that we deal with in places like Scottsdale, Arizona, excuse me, and others where people are very, very cognizant of light. We, I think the other issues, you know, whether it's, you know, canfield access and left turns and stuff, I think those are very easily addressable. I think as long as we comply with the remainder of the requirements that Mr. Phillips has and we've developed the TCC, I think it will be a really nice development.
I have one more question, if I may.
Yes.
I don't want to dominate too much time, sir, but you mentioned, we know you're taking, oh, they're taking down between 15 and 20% of the building. You mentioned, though, that at some further date or a different juncture, you might have to take more down. Could you add a little more?
Yeah, no, I think only there's, there's the one narrow wing on the back of the property that I believe was original, as well as an entry that was added later. What we're really doing is sort of taking down the area that is in such bad repair and really not very usable and concentrating on the most important part of the Abbey. And that's the exterior as well as the interior front rooms. The, on the north part of the Abbey building, there was a beautiful two-story room there that was divided with a mezzanine and created a second floor above it. We're going to remove that and create really the original fabric and celebrate that. Because that's really the important part of the house. Back that area we were going to take down was where the MRI facility was. It had already sort of obliterated that part of the property and really isn't, is quite frankly, it's not worth saving.
Wow. Thank you very much. One other thing is, as time goes by, and I had time to digest this over the weekend, I hope it wouldn't be an imposition if I called you with other questions I have.
I, you know, I don't know that you'll find another executive in a publicly traded company that would give out his personal cellphone and email address. Why do I do this? I'm very passionate about what we do and I invite questions. Look, when we get all the brains in the game, we'll come up with better solutions. That's what we did in Greenwich, Connecticut. Those folks up there are very, very protective. There's more billionaires in Greenwich and down in Palm Beach where we developed. They have lots of opinions. We listened to them all. We came up with great solutions and we'll do that here.
Thank you very much. I appreciate everything you've done for us tonight.
You're welcome. It's my pleasure.
Thank you, Mr. Grayson.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stan, for your presentation. Thank you to all the residents for sticking around until 10 o'clock this evening. Just to follow on, I have a few questions, but first a follow-up from Mr. Banget. About the historic structure and your preservation. And you stated that there were several things that are just aren't worth preserving. Is it your intention to try to recreate it in its historic form, even though you can't save it? What's your plan, Harry?
Yeah, I think, I think this is very minimal, what we're doing. And frankly, I think one of the tenants of, of how we think about things is, you know, we don't try to recreate what was historic. We try to save and preserve what's historic and then improve upon it and make it relevant for the next 100 years. And it's really, as we work with, you know, the historic preservation folks as well, you know, who spoke obviously before and I've, I've met with them, we'll work very closely with them and listen to their thoughts and ideas. But I think in their review of the property, as well as ours, we came up with what we thought was the most logical and really something that we could execute all with excellence and create something that would be amazing. So, you know, for, for us, we won't take down anything that, that we, in conjunction with, with, you know, the historic experts, we won't take down anything that doesn't make sense. We are going to have challenges with the exterior. It's been, it's been neglected. I showed you pictures of cracks. You know, Mr. Phillips, you know, had a study down on the property. It needs investment. It's going to need to be very creative to save the exterior, but we've done it before. We did it in Greenwich. We did it down at the Meatpacking District. We're doing it now at the San Francisco Dog Patch with another wonderful historic building, the Bethlehem Steel Building. And we know how to do it. And I promise you that we'll be very, very sensitive to this, this gem.
And you just touched on something I was going to ask also about working with our historic preservation commission. So it's your intention to bring them into the building and look at, look at the areas that you don't think are historic and you want to replace and, you know, walk through and have them be a party to the decision?
Absolutely. I mean, you know, we, you know, we, again, we want to collaborate. As I spoke about in that beautiful, you know, two-story room previously, you know, a floor was put in. Well, that's an afterthought. It was not part of the original structure and shouldn't be there. It was only put in there for commercial uses, for an office and such. So we're going to be sensitive to what's the original fabric and what's not. And be sure that we're, you know, that we're, we're sensitive to it. I mean, we're here because we want to save it. And we know, we do a great job with it. People appreciate it.
Great. And you showed us some pictures of some outdoor spaces. I was wondering, are those outdoor spaces, are they impervious or impervious? So they're stone? Is there any surface underneath that?
So what we do is they are decomposed granite and bluestone pavers. They, you know, we drain through them, so we have drains throughout the whole thing. And it, it creates a, you know, first of all, it's a beautiful way to have an outdoor space. But it is, you know, it's, it's, it's the way to do it. You know, we could do concrete. It would look terrible. We would never do that. We think this is the most beautiful way. And frankly, we're selling luxury furniture and we're selling a luxury experience. We're going to exceed whatever expectation you probably have for what a beautiful space would look like.
So is your answer that it is impervious?
Yes.
That there's nothing, there's nothing impervious underneath what we thought.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's, yeah, exactly.
And then speaking of the outdoor spaces, there was a suggestion from a resident about shifting some of the outdoor space to the roof of one of the buildings and that might free up some space to possibly shift parking. Again, there's some of these elements that are going to be decided. I'm worried. But I just wanted to get maybe your initial thoughts on this resident suggestion.
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't think the structure at the Abbey would really
Not the Abbey building, the adjacent new.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. So the adjacent building, what we were trying to do there is, you know, one is we think celebrating the outdoors on the floor is, you know, on the ground floor is the way to go here. And we thought in working with the TCC that we had a very good plan. The height limitations that we are agreeing to, we really think that it makes most sense to have the height of the Abbey and the height of our new building the same and not introduce something on the rooftop that's going to look kind of, you know, out of place. And so, you know, that was really the thinking that we had in designing that building. That building, the new building, we think works very well, would not really make sense to put something on the roof there. Especially, we have four acres of property here. Frankly, we own five acres because we own the extra acre behind, you know, that's next to the Donlands. But four acres of property and the coverage, strict coverage But four acres of property, I, and the coverage, strict coverage requirements that the code has and that we've worked through with, with the TCC, I think makes for a really good development.
How many acres were, were there on that California property you showed up with the five?
The California property was about an acre and three quarters. Maybe, maybe acre and a half to an acre and three quarters.
Mayor, I have a couple more, but switch it up if you like.
Okay, keep going. This is, this is.
Okay. So just, just a couple more. This is a redevelopment hearing. We explained in the beginning what redevelopment is and the fact it's going to go to the, to the planning board next. And residents has seen it, some concerns about the planting, quote unquote, you know, block. And I wanted to ask if you could inform the public of how you view working with a planning board to ultimately come up with an agreeable design, because this is really just a tent either, whatever, 40,000 or 10,000, you know, we're going to get much more granular with the planning board. So can you tell the public how you're going to be working with the planning board?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's like we work with every planning board that, that is charged with this kind of responsibility. It's a collaborative working sessions that are both, you know, with, with public input. We work closely with, with planning boards and with their planning staff to get these things done. And oftentimes there's other things, like the Landmarks Preservation Council is another layer that we work through in New York City and, and also the, the local boards, the community boards. So there's many stakeholders involved, but you know, in that forum, we'll work within the rules and, and make it as, as open as, as, as possible so that we can get the input from, from folks.
Last question, I just wanted to touch on the operating hours. You, you hold us the operating hours on the weekends, Friday, Saturday, the last, close at 10 o'clock, the showrooms, last meeting at 2:00, the restaurant. Can you give us a preview of what you view during the week?
Yeah.
Are you open seven days a week?
We are, we are open seven days a week. And really it depends just on, you know, how our business goes. I mean, we've been operating in the market for, since 1998. So we have an operating history in the market. We have stayed open until nine or 10 o'clock, depending on, you know, the business. But, you know, I think during the week, it's, it's possible there could be shorter hours. But, you know, people like to shop in the evenings too. So, you know, we, we need to be sensitive to our customers as well as our residents. But I think, you know, 10 o'clock would be, you know, when, when the gallery would totally shut down. And then really, it's only the folks that are left in the restaurant and they, they, they leave very orderly. We don't have a bar. I just want to make sure, you know, people, you know, thought we do. We don't have a bar. We won't be open until 2:00 AM. Frankly, there's a reason why we don't serve alcohol. We don't want drunk people in our properties. When you go into any of our restaurants, and, and New York is the closest, you'd find probably 75 to 80% of our clientele are women. They feel very comfortable being with us. They enjoy a glass of wine. We don't want to have a bar atmosphere and we don't want to be open late. That's not our business model. Our business model is about selling furniture and making people feel comfortable eating great food and also enjoying a beautiful, you know, vintage wine with us. That's the luxury experience. It's not about a bar scene.
Very good. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so Mr. Stancheck, I'd like to ask, I'm assuming you're, oh, R. Eadie's?
I'm sorry, you broke, you broke out there, Mayor.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't realize. Mr. R. Eadie's, do you have some questions?
No, I think everyone covered. I, I had some, but they were already asked.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Stancheck, I believe, we, we thank you for your presentation and I'd like to ask, I'm assuming you're planning to stay?
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Okay, good.
I feel like I'm still operating on West Coast time. I, I feel like it's, you know.
But you can go late.
I'm, I'm good.
Okay, good. Glad to hear. Okay, Mr. Phillips, I think you've got your work cut out for you. You probably have a, a list of questions and we'll turn it over to you to ask, to answer the questions that have come from our residents.
Mayor, before we continue, can you just inform the public what your game plan is for the rest of the evening? Are we ending after Mr. Phillips or are we going to continue? What's your game plan? Because it is, it is after 10 o'clock already.
It is, it is late. What we're planning to do here is to have Mr. Phillips answer the questions that were asked. And then we'll have an opportunity for us to make any closing comments we want to make for tonight. And we'll, we'll see where we are. We're going to see where we are time wise as to next steps.
Very good.
Mr. Cross?
Thank you. So let me state upfront, to a large extent, I think I've already addressed many of the substantive issues that have been raised because I think that much of what has been raised by the public over the last two meetings were also issues that were raised in Mr. Steck's report, which I believe I addressed accordingly. And there are some recurring themes and there were come recurring themes both last week and this evening. And just to kind of summarize what I think the recurring themes are, and Mayor, I'm focusing on the concerns that were raised as opposed to generally whether people supported the project or not. There were a lot of comments made, for example, this evening and, and the, and the other night as well, where residents basically indicated their support or non-support for the project. And these were essentially comments that required no response. And what I intend to do is go through everyone that spoke, but I'm not going to address the residents who basically, I'll, I'll mention who they were. And if anyone wants to correct me, they're, they're willing, I'm willing to hear that, but I have notes. But where someone was either opposed to the project without specific issues or supported the project, I just don't feel the need to, to comment. That's information, obviously, that the township committee will take into consideration and, and digest. But I'll try and go through all the comments based on my notes and I beg your indulgence as I kind of go through my, my notes over the course of the, the two hearings. I will say upfront that I think the recurring themes in terms of concerns are that the project is too intense, that the setbacks and buffers are not adequate. And then, as always, in any project, traffic has come up, but I think in this case, it's come up to a lesser extent. So as I go through everyone's issues and concerns and questions, I think for the most part, I'm going to focus on the intensity and the setback issues. Having said that, and I'm going to go and I'm going to respond, Mayor, in the order of appearance, starting with the hearing last week. And again, as best I can, address everything that was raised. And the first speaker from last week was Mr. Caputo. And he also spoke this evening and I may kind of get to his issues raised this evening later, just because I have it sequentially. Although he did mention some things this evening that he also mentioned last week. And I think his overall comment is that, in his opinion, the plan was not, or has not been properly vetted and he's suggestion, suggesting a different process by which the plan should go first to the planning board for some type of redo before basically it lands back on the township committee's desk for a introduction. I'll only say that that's kind of not how this process typically works. It's not how the process worked here. Essentially, the township committee directed the TCC to prepare the document. They did so. And we're here holding a public hearing, which is again, typical of a redevelopment plan. It's, it's not different, the process, than if you basically propose a new zoning ordinance. And obviously, the township committee, who the public really hasn't heard from yet, they're ultimately going to consider what they have heard from its professionals, the public, and they're going to decide what they believe is in the best interest of the residents of Morris Township. That, that's how it works, notwithstanding Mr. Caputo's suggestion. He also raised, he had a couple of questions on the first night. Can the planning board remove the entrances on Canfield? And he's correct. The, the redevelopment plan indicates that two driveways are permitted on Canfield. Two driveways aren't mandated on Canfield, two are permitted. One, as I think I indicated to you at the last meeting, I believe is absolutely necessary in order to provide not only overflow access, but also to service the restaurant. I think you need that access for the plan to work from a circulation standpoint. And I think he, you know, with regard to the second access, I think ultimately that's, that's on the table in terms of whether, if one is proposed, the planning board will get to look at it, how it affects site access, overall site circulation. And it can basically make a decision whether or not with that access, the circulation is adequate. Jim Slate and I happen to believe that the second access from Canfield will actually be beneficial from an internal circulation standpoint. But all of this will ultimately, as much of it will, Mayor, get resolved at the time of site plan approval. But again, I would express what's most important. This is right in the redevelopment plan, no matter how many accesses there are from Canfield, there will be no lefts out. And again, the physical manifestation of that will be determined at the time of site plan. He also asked, can you require a larger buffer than the minimum required? And while I'll say that, all else being equal, the answer to that is no, I will qualify that no by saying that the planning board has to be, or should be satisfied that the details, the specifications within the buffer, in terms of the planting, the planting heights, the planting species, the types, whether there's a wall, they have to be satisfied that within that minimum buffer area, that it will achieve the goal and purpose of affording protection to surrounding residents. So while yes, you know, the minimum buffer is the minimum buffer, but again, the, the buffer in terms of the width or depth of the buffer is only part of the equation. The other part of it is the details of the plantings and other appearances that may be in that buffer to afford protection. Can you increase a building setback beyond the redevelopment plan minimum? Same answer with a qualification, no. However, within those setbacks, the plan, as reviewed by the planning board, has to function properly from a site plan and circulation standpoint. And also, I think what comes into play in terms of that particular setback is whether other variances are being sought as part of the application. That will weigh in on that issue of whether or not the minimum is sufficient. It's not simply a yes or no answer. And then lastly, from the first night, what I have from Mr. Caputo was, I think he was questioning the use of the building square footages, which is sort of atypical. And he's correct in his zoning ordinance, it's atypical. But again, this is a redevelopment plan, which is unique and different. And I would just add, as you know, in this plan, we have specific square footage, square footage is tied to both the abbey and the two new wings of the building. But functionally, this is no different than a building coverage or floor ratio requirement, which you find in a zoning ordinance. The second speaker from the first night, I'm sorry, I didn't get his last name. His first name was George. He did raise two issues that I'd like to respond to. He mentioned that RH was seeking to basically provide landscaping design and architectural design services and also real estate brokerage services at this particular facility. These issues were discussed during the meetings and iterations of the plan with the TCC. And it was the TCC's opinion that these additional services at this stage would indeed potentially increase the intensity of the use and particularly the parking aspects. And that the TCC essentially said no in terms of expressly allowing these uses as part of the permitted uses within the redevelopment plan. There was a Mr. Smith, I think he was a Liberty Green resident. He, I have about a half a dozen things that he said, but my notes indicate that he was mostly giving comments about his feelings about the plan. And there were really no specific issues or questions that I felt I needed to address. Also, the first night, as well as this evening, you heard from Mr. Maoli, the property owner. I don't think that there's anything that I have to respond to the issues raised by Mr. Maoli. John Harper from Old Glen Road appeared. He had some suggestions. And again, they were sort of more comments than particular questions or issues about the particulars of the, of the plan. The next two speakers, I think, were husband and wife, Kristen and Nicholas. They basically did not, I think they were planned supporters. They didn't really have any specific questions that I feel that I need to address. And then also, the next three speakers, the first night, it was a Justin, a Joshua and a Sean Moransky. And as I go through my notes, Mayor, they were either supporters or not opposed to the project, but they didn't raise specific issues that I need to address. Going on to this evening, there was a Mr. Gallagher. Again, he was a planned supporter. I don't think I need to address his comments. There, the next speaker was Mr. Dingler and he spoke on a number of occasions and he raised a number of issues that I'd like to address. Some of them, I think, are site plan issues, but I think there are some threshold issues with regard to the redevelopment plan. And again, this has to do with the issue of whether or not what's proposed is too intense and also the parking and buffer setback and particularly to the rear lot lines of the homes on, on Crescent Drive, whereas I understand Mr. Dingler is a resident. And there were other speakers who, who were residents of Crescent Drive who also broached that issue. Ms. Costiak broached the issue. And there was a gentleman who read a statement, his name was Bill, I didn't get his last name. He also broached the issue of the, of the parking setback. And then there were also, another resident at 45 Crescent Drive indicated the project was too big. And then I think it was a husband and wife, they, they each expressed that they thought that the project was too, too big. Let me deal first with the intensity issue, if I might. And I dealt with this at the, at the last hearing as well, in response to Mr. Stack. And I think that the important thing to consider is that in terms of looking at any redevelopment option on this site, whether it be this proposal or something else, I, I think we all basically can understand that at some point in the future, this site is going to be redeveloped with or without the abbey. And I think it's important from a framework of basically understanding and evaluating that, that what's there now in terms of the building, the, the parking, the green space, that's really not the standard of review. And it won't be the standard review for any redevelopment proposal for this particular property. And as I indicated, we looked at two zones as to determine what might be an appropriate standard. And they're both zones that are located on Madison Avenue. One is the OL-5, which a lot of residents spoke about this evening, which includes the Crum and Foster building directly across Canfield, as well as some of the office buildings that are across Madison Avenue. Also, as you're aware, as you go further up Madison Avenue toward Morristown, there's a significant B-11 district as well, which kind of permits the types of uses that are contemplated here. So we basically compared both. And I will tell you that I think the OL, and another gentleman I'll try and respond to, who had. who had questions, I think his name was Paul, asked to compare to OL-5. And I'll try and go through that a little bit later. But I don't think OL-5 is the best comparison. OL-5 is designed for largely large lot office projects, where with regards to issues such as coverage and both building and improved lot coverage, and FAR is really designed for larger lots. The minimum lot size in OL-5 is five acres. And I can tell you, and you probably know it already, that Crum and Foster is a lot larger than five acres. The abbey site is actually less than four acres. B-11 actually allows for smaller lots. But again, it provides for the same kind of uses contemplated here. I will tell you that we have the same building coverage as in OL-5. We have the same lot coverage as in OL-5, notwithstanding that I don't think it's an exact comparable in terms of what would be appropriate. The height in OL-5 is 45 feet. We're lesser in terms of the height. And the FAR in OL-5, again, for larger lots, is 25%. And I think, as I told you at the first meeting, that if you exclude the basement, this redevelopment plan allows for roughly 25% FAR. And I think it jumps to about 30% if you include the basement. But again, obviously, you don't see the basement. The B-11 zone is basically would allow much more intensive development than OL-5. But for the most part, we stuck to the OL-5 standards, which I think is is more than reasonable in terms of setting a framework for redevelopment of this property, whatever it may be, whether it may be the RH plan or some other plan in the future. Let me deal with the issue of the parking and the parking buffers next. And let me also indicate upfront, and this was a concern that was also raised by Committeeman Giorgi at the last hearing about the issue of parking and can you basically put additional parking in the in the front yard? Let me say, number one, that in any non-residential district in Morris Township, the only restriction on parking is that it not be allowed in a front yard. So that's basically the policy of Morris Township from a land use policy standpoint amongst its other non-residential districts. And I just want you to kind of keep that in the back of your mind. The other thing I think you have to keep in the back of your mind is this property has two front yards. It has the largest on Madison, but it also has one on Canfield. So if you think about, if you strictly follow the zoning, rather than create different standards under the redevelopment plan, you would be left with not much room to put in parking. Essentially, it would be the rear yard, as you face the site for Madison, as well as the side yard that backs up to the houses on Crescent Drive. I will say that, again, understanding that whatever the site's going to be redeveloped for, and again, I think the existing condition is not the threshold point of comparison. I think it's pretty certain that there's going to be some parking in that side yard, whatever that side yard is, whatever the buffer is, whatever the parking setback. If the site's redeveloped, and particularly if the abbey building is demolished, you can expect that there's going to be parking where there's no parking there today because historically, the abbey did not have the parking. Back to the issue of the front yard. We, the TCC considered this. It was discussed with the RH people. I can tell you that, from my own professional opinion, I think that putting parking in the front yard is a bad idea in terms of the site, the aesthetics, maintaining the viewshed to the historic property, notwithstanding that its historical designation doesn't say anything about the front lawn. We're all cognizant about what that adds to the vista and the beauty of the abbey and its preservation. And I will tell you that, and Dave is here, he can corroborate this, but this was also the feeling of RH, who's the entity that would, if this approved, undertake this basic large-scale restoration of the property. And I think also Jim Slate, as the township engineer, and he can speak for himself and certainly will, but I think he concurs with me on that issue. So what we're left with is, you know, what is, what can we do in terms of that side yard where there's parking along the Crescent Drive side? And I will tell you that we spent a lot of time on this during the many iterations of the plan. And during what was basically the first iteration of the plan, the basic parking setback, I think, as I recall, was 10 feet. And then there was sort of a lull in the discussions when the plan went back to RH. They took some time and basically came back. And they came back and actually increased the footprint of the building from that initial kind of concept. And as part of that, they actually had proposed to reduce the parking setback on the Crescent side to five feet. And that was completely unacceptable to the TCC, and for obvious reasons. And ultimately, when they went back again and reduced the building footprint, pretty much to what it was under the original scheme, we actually got them to increase that to 15, from five to 15 feet. So it went from 10 to five to 15. The TCC and mostly Jim and myself were also quite cognizant. We, you know, we started to hear at the first public hearing from the neighbors. We reviewed Mr. Steck's report. And we understood that there was going to be concerns expressed by the residents of Crescent Drive. So between the last hearing and this hearing, we took a look at the plan again and to indicate whether or not we might be able to get some additional parking setback buffer on Crescent. I can tell you that the, we will not be able to get 30 feet. We will not be able to get 35 feet, which I think the residents asked for this evening. That would basically eliminate, basically, the parking module that's on that side of the building. And I think a sufficient amount of parking on that site is critical. And I don't think we have a lot of play, if at all, on parking because I think the the end result for all of us is that we hope that after six months to a year, that the overflow parking across Madison Avenue won't be necessary. But again, as I've stated, that's in the plan as a safeguard because basically of the use being idiosyncratic and not a lot of experience in this particular setting or context. So Jim and I took a look at it, and we basically figured out that there was a little bit of room to squeeze between the existing parking bays closest to the building and the building. It gets very tight, and there's walkways in there. But we think we can squeeze out an additional five feet. And we think we can basically increase that parking setback buffer on Crescent to 20 feet. But that's as much as we can do. Anything more than that is going to destroy that module. And there's really nowhere else on that site to put the parking. And the only other thing I'd add, and I appreciate the residents wanting protection. There's parking there, there's cars, there's headlights and so forth. And the TCC understands that and recognizes that the residents are deserving of protection. But I will add again, as I did at the last meeting, that to me, what's more important here than the depth of the buffer is basically the quality of the buffer. And you can do a lot, a lot with a landscape design of the of the quality that RH is basically willing to go to, to do a landscape design with a mix of plantings, walls, what have you, in order to provide those appropriate safeguards within the 20 feet. And as I said at the other meeting, I've seen better 15-foot buffers in some cases than 50-foot buffers. It all basically comes down to the quality of the landscaping, which I think in this is actually more important than the depth of the of the buffer. In terms of other speakers this evening and issues that I did not cover, a number of people in support said it was an eyesore, said it would help Madison Avenue, understanding that the corridor is going through transition. I don't have to address that. A lot of people, the site, what's proposed is too big, too intense. I addressed that to the best of my abilities. Mr. Keller from Rhodes, he really didn't have any questions to answer, at least based on on my notes. I think Mr. Stancheck addressed what he raised about events and the outdoor dining. And Ashley was a supporter of the project. Bob, 184 Mount Kimball, don't tear the building down. Frank from 48 Crescent Drive, I, Frank, I will acknowledge that there may well be times when there is traffic congestion, when a GPS is going to take you on another route. That does indeed happen. I'm sure that happens now. I never indicated that it that it wouldn't. And I will also confirm that there was no objection from the historic groups that are, that were, that spoke regarding the rear portion of the building coming down. And you also heard from Mr. Stancheck on that. That was the old service quarters, the vestibule back there is an add-on. And that portion of the building is not in very, very good shape. And I think the key is all the historically significant portions of the building will remain intact under this plan. Paul from 10 Crescent Drive, there are a lot of issues that he raised. And I know Jim looked into some of these as well. I'll do the best I can. He wanted a comparison to OL-5. And I kind of went through that from the standpoint of the standards that that relate to intensity of use. They, the OL-5 does have its own set of building setback standards that are somewhat different. It has a lesser required front yard, but it has larger required sided rear yards, at least one side. The the side yard setback to, from the existing abbey to the rear lot lines on Crescent is actually greater than the side yard setback in the OL-5 zone. The parking setback, there's not, essentially, there's no specific parking setback standard in the Morris Township ordinance, other than the prohibition in the front yards. What I will say, though, is there are buffer requirements. And I will say that if you looked at the OL-5 buffer, and again, I don't think it's an apples and apples comparison, but the OL-5 buffer is larger than the B-11 buffer, for example. I think that as applied here, I think the OL-5 buffer would be 40 feet. The B-11 buffer would be 10 feet or less. And we're saying, at least as far as Crescent Drive goes, that we can increase that buffer to 20, to 20 feet. Let me see what else. The Paul also had issues with the scale, which I think I've addressed. The bar, wine bar, bar issues and rooftop restaurant issues. I think Mr. Stancheck appropriately addressed that in saying that this is a bit of a different context than some of the other comparables, such as in Chicago and New York. Paul mentioned lighting. Lighting is very important, and it's a concern in terms of potential impacts on residences. But lighting is is an issue that is absolutely going to be addressed at the time of site plan approval. I think that lastly, Paul mentioned about a potential alternative. And I'm not sure I understood all of it. I think I understood in terms of the building layout on the site. And without getting into the details, and I will say that the TCC did spend a lot of time on the the layout of the buildings on the site. What I will say is, as I understood the alternative that was proffered, that I don't think that it would work either from a site circulation standpoint or in terms of providing the best aesthetics of the abbey and also from the sort of a preservation standpoint. And I don't know if you'd have room to do everything that he was asking because you have more room to go toward Canfield from the abbey than toward the the rear. So I think that those were the issues that that Paul brought up. Jessica Brennan, 7 Crescent Drive, she apparently was fully supportive. I don't need to address that. Same with Patricia Collins. Emily Vincent spoke twice, I think, from 71 Canfield Road. And and brought up a number of the same issues with the parking and the setbacks and the intensity. What I will say that is, Ms. Vincent indicated that it was her opinion that there were more than two options for the site, meaning the one option being sort of demolish the building and the other being the, you know, what's part of the the RH redevelopment plan, which is before you this evening. I would just say that, again, in my opinion, the reality is that there really are no other options that will simply save this building without basically breaching other portions of the site. And I think that the proof of that is that no one else over the years since Mr. Maoli has owned the building has stepped up to basically propose something that simply saves this building and uses the site the way it exists now. I think the reality is there are no end users that can feasibly, adaptably reuse this building and keep the grounds as is. And again, you know, whatever is going to be redeveloped there, and we've talked about other options, being other less desirable commercial or high-density multifamily housing. I think with those options, the issue of parking, particularly with the front yard prohibition in the side yard, is on the table. And and I think that needs to be weighed. And I've said it a bunch of times, but you can't view this proposal in a vacuum relative to what's there now. Michael Killen was a supporter of the project. Remo Caputo, let me see if I have anything from his second appearance, which I didn't cover. I talked about the process. He was indicating issues about RH is going to come back for outdoor dining and weddings and so forth. Again, that's, the outdoor dining is not permitted as part of the plan. As I've said, no one can predict the future. You heard the intent of the end user just prior to my speaking. So I think that was addressed. And I guess the last, well, not the last comment. Mr. Caputo takes exception to the parking across the street. He indicated it was bizarre. I'd use a little bit more nuanced word. It is sort of atypical. I don't know if it's bizarre in this context. But again, you have to understand the intent of it was to provide for potential overflow as a safeguard so that there's enough parking so that customers aren't attempting to utilize residential streets. And ultimately, we're going to know if and when this facility becomes operational, whether or not that that's needed. And as I mentioned during the first meeting, I've seen this sort of thing done in other instances in New Jersey. Mr. Maoli spoke again this evening. I have no response. Mr. O'Reilly indicated, what if RH goes out of business? I think I and others have addressed that over the course of these two meetings. I think actually, the better question is, what happens if this project isn't approved? And because I think that if it isn't, and it may well not be, but if it isn't, I think the alternatives have to be weighed in as part of the equation. Actually, Mr. Caputo had one last point. The plan is not ready to go. And I would respectfully disagree based on the process that I outlined earlier. It's now going to be in the hands of the township committee to decide where where to go with it. Christine indicated it was an excellent concept, but take neighbors' concerns as a consideration. I think within reason, we've attempted to do that, given all the competing interests and basic constraints. given all the competing interests and basic constraints. And then Justin Miller indicated too intense. I think that's been addressed. And the last comment was by Nina and her husband, who I think they're owners of the Home Emporium, and they indicated this is going to be a death knell to small businesses. I would only just say in response that that comment needs to be weighed relative to all the vacancies, commercial vacancies, we see along Madison Avenue, and the alternatives in terms of use for those vacancies. So with that, Mayor, I basically leave it in your good hands.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Phillips. So I'm looking at the clock. We've been here for more than four and a half hours. We had a five-minute break. I'm sure everyone has, you had this call. It's hard to process that you all. And I know that we all do have a lot of questions and comments. I have one in particular that I want to ask while Mr. Stancheck is still here. But before we do that, I would like to discuss with my colleagues on the TC how we go forward from here. My proposal would be that we plan to meet on September 23rd, the week following our next township committee meeting, and that at that time, we hold a discussion among ourselves after we've had time to reflect deeply on all that we've heard this evening and gather any additional information we may need, and have our discussion at that time. I suppose we could try to do that now. I don't feel like I could do it justice, because I need time to sort of reflect and process all that we've heard this evening. So I will entertain that as a discussion topic. And I do have just one thing I want to comment on before we close out. So let me hear what you have to say about.
Are you going to ask Mr. Stancheck a question?
Yeah.
Or are you going to have this discussion first?
Let's have our discussion first.
I'd like to throw out an alternative.
Okay.
We have a scheduled meeting on September 16th, which is before September 23rd. There is really not a lot on the agenda. We do have another rebuild hearing.
Especially if you have a gray cell, I disagree. We have a large agenda then.
We only have three. We have one rebuild hearing.
We have a public hearing then.
And we have the marketplace.
Yes, we have the marketplace here. I think that there's plenty of time at that hearing. I wanted to propose an alternative, that we continue our commentary then. All we have left is committee commentary and a vote. That's all we have left. I don't think committee commentary.
I see it as a discussion. But we have two differing proposals. You prefer to wrap this up on the night of our township committee meeting on September 16th? I'm preferring the following. So those two proposals are on the table.
I just would like to point out that the meeting on September 16th has a public commentary portion, that residents can speak about anything that they wish. We have formally closed the public commentary portion on this hearing, but there's nothing to preclude people from then getting up on the 16th and us rehearing and rehashing this with during public commentary on the 16th. So we, I think, I don't want to call it a risk, but if the intent is not to have any additional commentary, because we now have deliberations, I think we just have our deliberations on the 16th.
Okay, that's one view. I think it's different, Mr. Makuso.
I would like to, I go along with your theory of going till the 23rd, because there's going to be public comment, and they're going to be talking it. I don't think we can cloche them. So I would make a motion that we meet again, extend this meeting to the 23rd, and possibly that night, take a vote. But I'd like that to be a formal motion and a vote on that.
Mr. Man, can you be clear? Are you saying that we should reopen public commentary? Is that what you just said? No, I'm asking you to be clear. Are you saying we should reopen public commentary?
I would think that if we have that night just to do the restoration hardware thing, with Mr. Phillips' advice, to speaking to our attorney and our planner, get their thought process or input into it.
But we have two weeks before the 16th to do that, sir. Then how do you, how do you foresee handling the 16th? When residents want to come out and speak, how would you handle that?
If we make, first of all, Jeff, your microphone is not working well at all, so it's hard to hear you. My thought process is, we have our regular meeting on the 16th. And that's something we have to just give just a look at to as far as, do we want to have public commentary on this thing on the 16th? Or not have any on the 16th, but have it on the 23rd?
But we voted to close public commentary.
We do close public commentary.
Tonight, Jeff, we didn't close it permanently. We just closed it for tonight. I just think we should give that, because, look, act at haste, repent at leisure. We've got a lot of talking and investigating to do on this thing. And for an extra six days, it seems to be pretty specious for us to have to force the vote on the 16th. I think we should wait till the 23rd.
We have a motion on the table here to wait. Okay, but we need to clarify what this motion is.
What, did you hear from Mr. Joroffe and Mr. Arvind Harsch?
Yes, but we do have a motion on the table, so.
Do we?
Yes, Mr. Man, you so made a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
But I'm trying to clarify what the motion was. Because you moved that we continue this meeting on the 23rd. Is that it? That's the essence of your motion, Mr. Makuso?
Yeah, and I'm not quite sure. I'd like to speak to the experts about whether we include public commentary, but I think we're much.
I believe, Mr. Makuso, that we have closed public commentary for this public hearing. What I would say is that if residents wish to speak in public comment, they can come on the regular meeting on the 16th and speak about whatever they wish. But the official public commentary of this public hearing has been closed.
Well, I'm mistaken then, because I thought you just closed the public commentary for this meeting, like we do at all the other meetings. It doesn't mean that, you know, once you said we're going to have no more public commentary, it's always for the particular that we're meeting.
Peter, this is a hearing, just like any second hearing on any ordinance that we hear. And once public commentary is closed, we've done this for years and years. Once public commentary is closed on a second hearing, it's closed. But maybe, Mr. Carlson, I mean, based on the vote, we just talked about closing public commentary. What's the part of that?
Traditionally, when public commentary is closed, it is closed for the hearing on that ordinance, not closed for the night. My understanding was that we closed public commentary with respect to this ordinance.
That was my understanding as well.
That's mine.
Mr. Joroffe, do you want to weigh in on that?
I mean, I think if the word delayed the 23rd, residents would have the opportunity twice at the 16th meeting to speak in whatever manner as they wish to, which could potentially happen. So theoretically, we would provide them two chances for public comment if we delayed to the 23rd. The question is, if we were to proceed with this on the 16th, there'd just be one public comment period before we vote?
No, the way I understand it, we would be doing this right at the beginning of the meeting.
I understand that. We do this first, we make our comments, we vote, and then we open up the public commentary for anything else people want to talk about. That's the way I envision it. And I don't, just to understand, we do have another redevelopment hearing on the 16th, which is the marketplace, the redevelopment of the Holgate, Sycamore and Marshall Strip. There are going to be residents coming out for that as well. And it could last for a couple of hours. But I don't foresee ending this discussion. I don't think it'll take that long, maybe half an hour, maybe 45 minutes, but leaving plenty of time for the rest of the meeting.
We committed not to vote tonight, for sure. And we are not. And the decision we have is, will we vote on the 16th or will we vote on the 23rd? And Mr. Arvind, do you want to weigh in?
Yeah, but thank you. You know, with people being away on vacation still, people are just back into the swing of things. School's starting next week. I would think that if, as many people, you know, again, as against having this done now, because I felt like we were hastily trying to get, you know, ram this meeting in so that we can get to a vote under the circumstances and all that, which I've said before, which I don't want to repeat. But for an opportunity to have as many people to be able to share their concerns or their support for this, you know, if we, one more week after, and then we take a vote, which I kind of have a feeling how it's going to get voted anyway. But at least we have an opportunity. We give as many residents as possible the opportunity to speak. So what I will do is second Peter's motion to have it come on the 23rd, so that we can, as I said, give as many people an opportunity. And if nobody talks about it, then nobody talks about it. But at least there's an opportunity, because, you know, fortunately, the individuals that were in Vermont were able to participate. But I'm sure there's many that couldn't because of just getting back from vacations, getting their kids ready for school and whatnot, so.
Is the motion that you're sending, Mr. Arvind, is that we basically almost like carry this public hearing to the 23rd? And we need, that's, I'm trying to clarify what the motion is.
If I'm mayor, I would suggest that we break the, what's about having a complex motion? I think the first thing that we need to clarify is the 16th or the 23rd. And I think we should simply have a motion on one or a higher level.
So we're going to have two different motions?
Well, not one, but somebody should rule for the day that they favor.
We have that motion.
We have a motion for the 23rd, but what is the 23rd going to look like then? What's the puzzle for the meeting on the 23rd then? What are we going to accomplish on the 23rd, other than having just our committee professional?
We will have the time to review everything we've heard tonight, which is a lot. We'll have time to sort of organize our questions and comments. I can see us perhaps having a discussion with each other. And I could see that taking an hour.
The mayor's thought process is very clear on that, Kathy. Three weeks gives us a heck of a lot more time to ask questions, to think, and to determine where we're going. It's a big decision, and.
It is a big decision. And there's been a lot, there is a lot of communication that needs to go on. And there's a lot of options that need to be considered.
I would suggest that we take a vote.
Okay, so we've got the motion on the table to, to.
To, I believe the motion correctly, Mr. Man, who said to carry the public hearing on this ordinance to the 23rd of September.
That was to you, Mr. Makuso.
I'm sorry, Scott, you were breaking up too. Just repeat what you think the motion is.
No problem. My understanding of the motion is to carry the public hearing of this ordinance to the 23rd of September.
And that was seconded by Mr. Arvind. And we've clarified that the carry means that we will have our discussion. And I would like Mr. Phillips to be there. And of course, our professionals, but we'll just sort of, we'll carry our discussion until the 23rd, giving us time to process and reflect on everything we've heard, gather additional information if needed, share ideas with each other, talk with various people. Mr. Phillips, are you available then?
Yes, I'd be happy to share any input that you would like from me on the 23rd, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Carlson, Mr. Slay, are you available?
I'm good.
Okay.
I don't mind.
And just for clarity of the record, the public commentary section is closed.
That is correct.
Okay.
So, okay, so we have a motion, a second, that needs to be a vote. So do we, Emilio, would you please, I request a roll call.
Yes, Mr. Arvind.
Yes.
Mr. Joroffe.
Yes.
Mr. Makuso.
Yes.
Mr. Griselle.
I will not be alone, December. I will go along with my colleagues and go yet.
Mayor Wilson.
Yes. All right, so we agreed to reconvene on the 23rd. We didn't decide a time. We've been starting at 6:00.
I think you can do that one, except that the usual start time is seven.
We'll start time of 7:00, okay? And we're going to do this one by, this will be a Zoom, right? Okay? And then I would like to, I just have one question I wanted to ask while Mr. Forbes and Mr. Stancheck are both here. We have, I have spent a lot of time talking with various people about the parking, especially on Canfield. It's very concerning. So we've talked about the setback and moving the setback to 20 feet, which, that's good. The other piece that sort of stood out to me was in the, I'm not sure where I saw it, if it was in one of your earlier presentations or in the letter that Mr. Vitolo sent. But there were the diagrams and the pictures of the buffers, and I think there were different choices. And is it possible for you to show them to the public? I don't know if the other members of the township committee have seen them. I thought they were significant, and I'm not sure at what point members of the public get to see them.
Well, first of all, from our standpoint, you know, we'd be happy to share what the solves we've had for buffers and for, whether it's walls, shrubs, trees, and other methods that we've used in the past. So we'd be happy to share those. We're proud of them, and I think that they are, that they're quite amazing. So yes, we can share that.
Yeah, for me personally, when I saw the visuals, when I saw the diagrams and I saw the pictures of what they looked like, the hedges, the trees, the combination with the walls, that, it just, it made a different impression on me than just reading about it. So I thought those visuals were important. And I would like the public to see them at some point. Perhaps we can show them on the 23rd? I don't know, or, I know it's putting me on the spot.
Yeah, it's kind of, honestly, it's kind of easy. We have plenty of time. I mean, frankly, we could do this tomorrow. So, you know, we have the material, it's at our hands. We can, you know, we can give you as much information as necessary, so not a problem.
I have, Ms. Mayor, I have one more thing for Paul. I spoke about this at our last meeting, was to have, if we can work it out with DOT, and we'll speak to Mr. Quinn about it, to have no parking on either side of Canfield from Madison Avenue up to a certain point, I'm not quite sure where. Just, that will prohibit anybody from sort of smooching in and saying, you know, I'll just park here, rather than have to leave their car to get pushed away or to get parked for them. So is that something we could incorporate? Or is that something we have to go to DOT or the police department?
I think that's what.
Mr. Griselle, if you would handle that level of work.
And I would see there being a need for discussion there.
That would be a separate level of orders, provided the department.
Okay.
So, sorry, this should have been part of the discussion also. this should have been part of the discussion also, about pushing the meetings on the third. So then it's your intention then to push the redevelopment agreement to October then, and the pilot agreement to October, because I think we're going to do it concurrently on the sixteenth. Anyway, I just want to make sure that that timeline is understood.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
We'll have our discussion and our vote on the twenty-third.
And then are we only introduce, could we, are we going to introduce the developers' agreement and the pilot agreement on the twenty-third?
We're going to have our vote on the twenty-third.
Okay.
Vote from there.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else who need, just to give comments about the twenty-third? We'd like to thank everyone for coming tonight. It is, it's our job to listen carefully to everyone's views and to make a decision that, in our judgment, serves the best interest of our community. And I do feel like we've heard a lot tonight. I personally, I want to reflect deeply on everything we've heard. I do want to re-listen to the testimony. I do that, I listen, I'm about two-thirds of the way through re-listening to last week's meeting. I am going to re-listen to tonight's meeting. I want to have a very, all of us, we want to have a thorough understanding of everybody's views. We want to really think deeply what the concerns are that people have brought up. And I also want to discuss the options for addressing concerns, which that's part of what I would like to discuss in more detail on the twenty-third. So our goal is to make a decision that serves the best interest of our community, our residents. And that's really, that's all I have for this evening, and I'm going to break my call. If anybody has anything else.
I would, I would make a motion to adjourn, Madam Chairman, Chairwoman.
Okay, so we have a motion to adjourn. Did anyone have any comments?
Yeah, what happens?
I just wanted to make one comment. I had, after one of the residents had, or one of the speakers had stood up, I made a comment. I just wanted to follow up on that. I want to ensure that every resident understands that this, this body takes everybody's comments very seriously. We understand that everybody has a right to their own opinion, their personal opinion, and what they feel is in their own best interest and the best interest of the town. This body respects everybody's opinion. I don't, I don't take lightly any mean calling or finger pointing or anything like that. I'm sorry we had a little bit of that here tonight. But I just want to assure the public that we take everybody's comments seriously. We are going to contemplate them, as the mayor stated. And everybody, you know, we hope everybody's been heard on this, that wanted to be heard, and we'll deliberate. But resident input is really important, and it was very important we helped.
Very much so. I would also like to thank everybody who's here. We had a lot of staff members here this evening in extra time and extra help, and really appreciate all that. Okay, all right. And does anyone else have any final concluding comments? No? In that case, I want to thank everyone for coming tonight, and we will resume, we will resume the public hearing on this, on the redevelopment plan for the Abbey on September twenty-third at seven o'clock via Zoom.
I'm going to second Mr. Manqueso's motion to adjourn.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you. We are.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, have a great weekend, everyone.
You too.